Let's see, Tuesday, December tenth, seven oh two P M. I make a motion to open the planning board meeting. Addie Mae Weiss and I.
Second.
Okay, move to second Frank, so Addie Mae Weiss, I, Frank Hook.
All right.
Jim Guarino.
Aye.
Bob Wolf.
Aye.
And Steph Harrison.
Aye.
Okay, so um, let's see, the agenda for this evening is the um, we'll open the meeting, then we have minutes from November nineteenth and November twenty fifth. At seven fifteen P M. We have a scenic road hearing for a driveway cut at sixty five Farm Road, which we anticipate we will be opening that hearing and then continuing it to eight P M. As there is a zoning board of appeals conflict that Mr. Richardson needs to attend. So he will be joining us at eight. Um, I believe he, I'm not sure if he'll attend at seven fifteen and then join us at eight, but anyway, just heads up. Then current planning board business zoning by law review updates and B T A multi-family overlay district updates and hearing preparation for the hearing on December seventeenth next Tuesday. The A D U accessory dwelling unit update, the fiscal year twenty six budget for planning board and warrant preparation and timeline discussion, and then followed by other business reports on meetings with other boards and entities and the town planner report. I um, are there other items that need to be added to the agenda that we did not anticipate that would be um, necessary to be added? No. Okay, all right. So I move to accept the agenda for this evening.
So move.
Second, okay, so all in favor of our agenda, Addie Mae Weiss is I, Steph Harrison.
Aye.
Frank Hook.
Aye.
Jim Guarino.
Aye.
And Rob Wolf.
Aye.
Okay, so if we could start with the um, minute from November nineteenth.
We, we don't have the nineteenth, trying a new person for that, um, but I did do the twenty fifth and had sent those out.
Okay, sorry about that. I was trying to find the email. I knew the attachment wasn't coming up, so um, November twenty fifth, are there any, did everyone have a chance to review those minutes and are there any um, updates or?
I did have an edit.
Even edit, okay.
Yep, so on the one to third from last, uh, the fourth from last paragraph, and it talks about the zone ones, uh, the public water supply. I was having to say that D E P has zone one as hundred and ninety feet from a P D W S, which would be excluded, not possible prep law, next one. Interim wellhead protection area, I W P A, which is four hundred and ninety foot radius from a public water supply. I didn't have the right numbers there, so I wanted to make sure that it's one hundred and ninety and four ninety.
Okay, that's great. Thanks Heidi for checking on that. Any other discussion on the minutes? If not, I move that we accept the minutes as amended. All right, moved seconded, so all in favor of accepting the November twenty fifth minutes, Addie Mae Weiss is I, Jim Guarino.
Aye.
Steph Harrison.
Aye.
Frank Hook.
Abstain, I wasn't there.
And Rob Wolf.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everyone. All right, so it's seven oh six, so um.
You want to do the budget that shouldn't take too long?
Yes, um.
I think Steph has, I sent her some of the documents that she could probably bring up, the planning board budget.
Are you able to do that, Steph?
Yeah, sorry, I'm just still trying to open them, but I have this one open, just trying to get everything open, there are so many documents.
Um, so as a little introductory, uh, planning, the advisory committee sent a letter asking for zero percent um, increase over the prior year. That is not possible for a budget for several reasons, and I'm going to go ahead and explain it. The next page that we have will show you the salary ones we'll go through. But right now, um, they had put in the town planners twenty two hours a week. And since, at least since January, because I've got the records of all the payrolls, I have been averaging twenty six point something hours per week. It has not slowed down, it's not getting better. I've talked to Jeremy and initially, um, there was a question of what, Gino had up to thirty five hours a week on here, but part was supposed to be sustainability, and somehow they thought the breakdown twenty two would work for planning board, and it's not, so I've asked to increase planning board to twenty four hours to add two hours on to get paid for the amount of work that I've been doing. Um, Jeremy and Deb, who I met with today, seemed, that seemed to be reasonable, because it's totally supported by weeks and weeks of hours being logged in here that are exceeding what was budgeted. Um, so that's the difference in the salary and also our planning board clerk. We had reduced him from three hours a week down to two point two five, but when we looked at hiring someone else, it actually takes them longer than Steph, who used to be so practical and efficient. Um, so we're back, putting it back up to three. And then the hourly rates are twenty eight to thirty per hour for planning board clerks. So Steph, you were way underpaid.
I guess I was.
Yes, so I, you know, I'm not finding that we can afford to do it, so I've had to make the adjustment on, I chose twenty, I went to low end, twenty eight dollars per hour, three hours a week, so that's why that increased as well, and shows a big jump, but you're talking small numbers, so any, any amount of a small number makes a big jump percentage wise. The other one that's going up is our postage and mailing. I had increased that from four fifty to nine hundred, because we are actually having a lot more hearings coming up. And we'll go into similar things that are coming, but we, we need to send out more mailings, and that was not going to be a sustainable number. Again, not a huge increase money wise, but budget wise, it shows a huge jump. The other one going down that shows a thousand percent increase is um, the select board had voted to join the M W R C A, the Metro West Regional Collaboration. And that had a charge, which we did not know, and we received a bill on F Y twenty four, it was nineteen hundred and thirty nine dollars back then, and I was told it should go under the planning board budget, which there was no budget for it. This year, it's going to be the same problem, because we got the, got the notice that we were going to have to pay money after our budgets were already done. So we're going to have a deficit on it this year. I put in for twenty two hundred for next year, because it, numbers don't go down, they usually always only go up. So that puts our planning board budget then at seventy two thousand, two hundred and seventy nine dollars, and it shows a seventeen percent increase based on those factors.
And a dollar to dollars, that's from sixty one to seventy two, so we're talking just shy of eleven thousand.
Yes, and part of it is, you know, a good chunk of it was the having to join and pay cover the Metro West Regional. Are there any questions with this, or?
Um, I mean, I guess, you know, you're talking about adding two hours a week to your schedule, but you've been averaging more than two hours, I guess, um, I guess I get, we see how this goes and see if you need more next year, but.
I, I know, you know, because it's like this wouldn't even be effective till July, but you know, my, my, I, my preference is to try and get down to twenty four from what I'm doing.
Right.
You know, Jeremy did ask that today too, but um, I, I do want to try and get it down to twenty four, and I'm hoping that maybe some things will calm down at some point.
Yeah, I mean, I know I'd heard, you know, other departments within land use, would there be some more assistance that could be shared and um, to help offload some of these things, but it's, it's not clear what direction that's going in, and we don't really, there's no mechanism for different departments for our board and other boards to really
Right.
of the budget discussion, um. All right, we, we submit the budget, and then of course this gets reviewed at advisory hearings.
All right, so you, you would vote to approve this budget tonight if this is what the board wants to do, and it will get submitted to advisory for their hearing, and then further on to the select board later for their hearings.
But as of right now, we don't have anybody that's been hired to do the clerk work, to take the uh, the minutes.
I, I'm actually trying a new person for the, the nineteenth meetings, and that's what, um, it's uh, Deb Tarkis, who works in conservation as their administrative person. She actually does the meeting minutes for Sudbury and Wellesley.
Planning boards.
Planning board sub-meetings, minutes for them.
Okay.
On the side, so I asked her if she's willing to take on hours, and she is. We just have to be careful of the amount of hours she works, she can't exceed twenty hours, because otherwise that becomes a benefited eligible position. So she can do it short term, and once they hire a conservation agent, they were going to be reducing her hours so that she would then have a little bit of time where she could give us the three hours a week.
Can, can you just comment on that um, the Metro West Regional Planning?
Yes, and that's.
Affiliation?
Yes, so that is part of M A P C Metropolitan Area Planning Commission, which is the greater global planning thing that we, we kind of all belong to, and they have different sub-regions. And this Metro West Regional one is a group of towns locally that get together and have meetings, and it's usually a select board person and a planning board, which is Rob Wolf for our planning board, who attend these. And Rob, you might be able to talk more about Metro West than I know.
And we also, as a town, where does the M A P C like swap region dues get paid out of?
We don't, I don't know if they have dues for swap.
We do pay, we pay, we've been as a town, because that's um, as far as I understood, we do pay a, an M A P C fee.
We were trying to find that, because I had Deb looking that up, and we couldn't find that term, so we'll have to find out where it goes. The four ninety five partnership is paid out of the select board's office. Um, and Jeremy was discussing whether that should move to the planning board as well, but the four ninety five one tends to be geared more towards town administrators. So they, he decided that is going to stay with the select board.
But, um, Rob, you've been attending the regional, or the, or I guess we have the swap region, and then we have the Metro West, which I, I do kind of remember when the discussion came about, well, maybe we should also be part, joining some of the Metro West meetings, because the swap is mostly communities that are south of us and um, different, I mean, it's Bellingham, Rentham, Franklin, and we felt like, well, it'd be good to be kind of participating with Natick, Framingham. Um, and I think that's where that discussion came from, to kind of, when we're dealing with, you know, what are our towns facing and being involved with other areas for discussion to kind of understand more regionally what's happening around us and how we can maybe plan. And that was the thinking. I don't know that we realized that there would then be an additional fee, but.
Um. Yeah, I um, I don't know, I, I hear interesting information at them. I don't know if we, you know, there hasn't been a lot I had to bring back to the planning board, though, but um, you know, all the towns have been having their issues with the three A zoning. Um, and that's often a topic of discussion there. Um, it seems like it's good to keep an eye, eye on like Ashland, Holliston, those neighboring towns.
I thought they were good for the trail network as well, good support with um, getting support for trail expansion.
Yes. Um, yeah, they were doing something at the last meeting, they, what, you were in on it, right, Heidi?
Yeah.
They were um, they were putting little money into like social media presence, which I don't know if that's part of what our dues are paying for. I'm a count me in as a social media skeptic, I guess, but whatever. Um.
Yeah, so it's um, like seven sixteen, so we are, we should open the hearing for um, the pre-hearing officially, and then continue it to eight o'clock and the wordings.
You have a motion to open the scenic road hearing for sixty five Farm Road?
Right, is there a motion to open the? I make a motion to open the hearing, the scenic road public hearing for sixty five Farm Road. The application brought forward by Phoenix Partners to remove a portion of the stone wall in order to provide access for a driveway. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
All right, all in favor of opening the hearing, Addie Mae Weiss is I, Steph Harrison.
Aye.
Uh, Frank, Frank Hook, sorry.
Aye.
Jim Guarino.
Aye.
Bob Wolf.
Aye.
Okay, so the hearing has been opened, um, and now I make a motion to continue the hearing to eight o'clock because of the conflict with Z B A, so that our applicant may attend at eight P M. Uh, second on that motion?
Second.
All right, all in favor of continuing to eight P M. Addie Mae Weiss is I, Steph Harrison.
Aye.
Frank Hook.
Aye.
Jim Guarino.
Aye.
Bob Wolf.
Aye.
And Andy Goodell, oh, no, Andy, sorry, that was just an afterthought, someday. Um, all right, so we are continuing to eight o'clock, all right, so we can, I guess we can finish our discussion on the budget, because we have to make a decision and approve it, so it may be submitted. Um, I don't know, does anyone else have any other questions on the budget in front of us here for, again, as Heidi pointed out, this is, uh, we submit it, it goes to review process at advisory hearings, and it becomes part of the whole budget that gets approved at town meeting, and then it goes into effect January of twenty twenty five, so. Um.
No, doesn't it go into effect, uh, July of twenty twenty?
Sorry, July, I got my J's mixed, sorry, I'm still.
Yeah, um, in terms of, because it's not broken out here, uh, three hours a week times four weeks is twelve hours and not close to twenty hours, so obviously, right now, with the uh, with a potential clerk helping out to come, you know, come con and getting close to twenty hours, I can see how that could be a problem, but after that finishes or that ends, that person wouldn't be that close to being in twenty hours, but do our numbers reflect that it really is twelve hours per month? You know, times twelve, uh.
The, the last consultant, the, the one consultant we tried billed us for five and a half hours for one planning board meeting minutes. It was a two and a half hour, two and.
Well, I'm just asking, what, what, what do you have in the budget here? Is it for twelve hours a month times twelve months in a year?
Roughly, yes, yeah.
That's the question, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think covering the meetings would be a huge lift.
Yeah.
I think it's, it's a burden on any one of us, speaking for myself, having done it once, yeah, imagine Heidi or Steph.
Yeah. Right, yeah, I mean, it's a true testament, Steph, to, again, we're underpaid and you were, um, like, many things that you do, you do very well, and don't give yourself enough credit. Um, I guess at it to that point, I am concerned whether that's even enough hours to, a lot for the clerk.
Well, I mean, the, I just did the calculation at twenty eight dollars an hour, it's fifty two weeks times three hours a week, times twenty eight dollars, gets you to that forty three sixty eight in, in my case, uh, and um, the planning board meetings themselves tend to not be more than two hours, sometimes they're one and a half hours. So then having six hours in a two-week cycle.
It takes longer when they're doing Zooms to stop and keep going, so even though it's a two and a half hour meeting, it takes a much more than two and a half hours doing the minutes.
Um, yeah, I mean, I did find it to be faster to watch on Zoom, because you don't have to do it twice, like when I would do it, when I would be in the meetings in person, I would take notes, and then I would have to go back through the notes and compare it to the agenda and the documents and research how to spell someone's name, who made a public comment or whatever, and it's, when you do it on Zoom, you kind of do it all in one go, like you kind of stop along the way and you see the document in front of you, and you can pause and copy the words off the screen, uh, off the slides, and I found it to be a little more efficient, um, but I didn't like not being able to ask clarifications or not being able to speak up if I couldn't hear someone, you know, in real time, so I tended to attend in real time and then do the minutes afterwards. Um, I, it's just different strokes for different folks, I think, everybody has different style.
No, most of the planning board clerks right now only take them from Zoom. These are people that are doing it at home, and they don't attend in person. And they're doing it usually for several towns right now, a lot of like, like Deborah, our person is. But if she doesn't work out, I will keep looking for someone else. I mean, there are, it seems to be a growing business.
I think three hours a week and the sum is fine for something that's going to be in place in eighteen months' time. Right? We don't know how it's, how predictable it's all going to be. I think it's a very rational line item for a budget to present. We'll, we'll see what pushback we get, but I don't think we should probably maybe fuss over that right now. I think, I think it's reasonable.
And, and theoretically, the planning board clerk could also help prepare packets, could do some, it doesn't have to be just meeting minutes. So if there's something.
They thought, I mean, if the budget money was there, then we could extend, especially if it does work out for Deb, then when the conservation agent is hired and she has a few more hours, then she could potentially be more administrative assistance for planning, so that was my only thought with, do we want to think about increasing these now, but I guess, since we how much, we've already increased it quite a bit from the last budget, and it complicated enough to get through advisory, so I guess if we I guess my fear is that advisory tends to, you know, they all are trying to show that they're being budget conscious, um. I guess if we can get, like you've done with us, Heidi, to get them to reflect on the numbers and not the percentages, because the percentages kind of look freaky, and, but the actual dollar amounts are pretty small that we're talking about. So, all right.
So I make a motion.
Thank you, Frank. I'll second the motion to accept this budget for submission. All in favor, Addie Mae Weiss is I, Steph Harrison.
Aye.
Frank Hook.
Aye.
Jim Guarino.
Aye.
Rob Wolf.
Aye.
All right, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Heidi, for putting this together.
Sure.
Um, all right, so then the next item, um, Heidi, what would you, let's see, do we?
Why don't we do the M B T A PowerPoint?
All right, you're able to pull that up, Steph, thank you.
So I had a couple versions, Heidi, and I, I'm assuming they're kind of all the same, but one said short, but it was the same file size.
Uh, I think it's the number of words on a slide. There was some feedback of having too many words.
Oh, okay, so I should open that one too.
Yes, yes, so I think everyone was sent the, what I call the longer PowerPoint, um, which meaning longer means more words on each slide. Uh, if so, if we could do the short one.
Yeah, I'm pulling it up now. You get to see how slow my computer works.
And I am very open to anyone else who can work with PowerPoint, make the graphics better, has a great choice of graphics, that would be wonderful, um. But I wanted to at least put something out there to have everyone have something to start with.
This is a public hearing?
Yes, next Tuesday.
Should I change it from proposal to public hearing?
Sure, but it's our, this, what, what, no, because this is what we're presenting is our proposal for the overlay district.
Okay.
It's up to you.
We could put it underneath on this, after the date. You could say hearing, or Sherburne. Public hearing, yeah. Yeah, that, that works, then it's clear. Thank you, Steph.
I was initially trying to do a little bit of a history, and actually, Addie Mae, since you're going to be giving the presentation, if you want to go through it, but this, the slide was trying to give a little bit of a history of why we're even doing this.
Right, so we, kind of as most of us are familiar, this is a goal to educate anyone who hasn't been paying attention, although luckily, thanks to Milton, a lot of people have been alerted to this, um, so the premises that there's critical housing shortage in Boston area, twenty twenty one estate law, the M B T A Communities Act came into being to as an effort to address housing shortage, uh, the law requires every town create a new zoning district overlay to allow development of new multifamily housing with access to public transit, so the zones, um, if the, this is goes down further, the requirements depend on town location and size, so starting with towns with a commuter rail on the first level, and then there's adjacent small, large town, and then there's adjacent small town.
Can we, can we just, on that line, there's adjacent small town, just highlight that in yellow? That, because that would then show that that would be our, what, our designation, and just.
Yeah. Yeah, so then Sherburne is an adjacent small town, because we have, are adjacent to two towns with commuter rails, so Framingham commuter rail.
Is Ashland not adjacent to us?
I guess it is technically.
We don't.
But we don't, I don't know if the.
Yeah.
Not a big deal, I just thought it was.
I mean, they tend to focus on.
We could, we could say, and Framingham, West Natick, and Ashland, yeah.
Mm-hmm. You didn't have to say West Natick, because we're also pretty close to downtown Natick.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say Natick.
Yeah, and Ashland.
Yeah, it's the name of the town, not the station stop.
Have commuter rail stations.
Yep, and he said it. Um.
Ah.
I mean, we probably talked about this before too, but do we want to state that the law requires new zoning districts to allow development in by right of new multifamily housing, maybe by right in parentheses?
I, I think the by right becomes confusing, then you spend time discussing by right means, and so sometimes less is more.
Yeah, I'm inclined not to scare everyone into thinking that it, there'll be no overview, and some people.
Exactly, then you have to go and say, subject to all the current planning, you know, and it then gets very bulky.
Right, and, and the one kind of distinction that we've all discussed throughout the last year plus has been that this three A law does not, is different from forty B, local bylaws do still pertain, it's just we created this overlay, overlay zoning that allows for the multifamily, so.
I, I just, I think we need to just keep clarifying zoning, dis-zoning versus projects. I don't know how to do that, but I'm proposing something here. No project is under consideration. Or, um, or no, this is, this is zoning, not a project, not a, not a build, not a housing project, right, like, something like that.
So I know that this is the shorter version, and it's shorter in that each, the, the kind of commentary from, um, one of our former planning board members who is an editor guru, um, and had done many presentations, had requested that the slides be decreased in the amount of text, um, but I do know that then Heidi did some work on this for presentation purposes, and when we have our discussion at the hearing, we can add a lot of things in our discussion. But, um, the plan would be that then the version that would get posted on the town website for anyone who wasn't able to attend would have the wordier PowerPoint presentation for review, so that, um, there would be more actual text to read, and so I guess we we can edit this slide, but there's, we're hesitant to add too much text to these slides as we're trying to.
Yeah, if anything, we should reduce it, and you don't have to necessarily read everything that's on the slide, and you don't necessarily need to say what's on the slide.
Yeah, but can we go back to the presentation, the slide? Yeah.
Yeah, I find this one a lot more approachable than the other one, just even for posting.
Yeah.
Like, I wouldn't want to just post this one with three paragraphs. I find that the bulleting and the bolding is much more effective, even for some, especially for someone who wasn't there, personally.
Okay, that's fair, and I guess then, so then we just have to kind of keep thinking about if we do have the shorter, I mean, I agree that this visually is easier to read. Um, and there is plenty of information that Heidi has posted on the town website with three A information, so, um, yeah, it's tough, plus we do have the benefit, the hearing will be recorded, so that's a distinction from maybe something in the past year. That's a distinction from maybe something in the past year. So, right, I mean, to have everything in one PowerPoint presentation, it's just not possible. And it's not necessarily. Um, best practice either. Alright, so, given this. I, I guess so then to your note, note, this is zoning, not a housing project, I guess I would say this is zoning, not a. Not a, um. Not a.
Specific, specific development.
Yeah, I would just add maybe a sentence after that saying something like, the law does not require that. Any, that does not require multifamily housing actually be built on any specific timeline. Or something like that.
Can we, can we not just say not a building requirement or something?
I think that's, um, yeah, not a construction requirement.
Yeah, I would say no construction required or something like that. Meredith has her hand up too, when you.
Yes, Meredith, if you have a suggestion, we'll welcome it.
Oops, sorry, yeah, I, I was just thinking as, you know, with the concerned citizens. I think most of us know it is zoning, not a project yet, but what I probably, if I were you. What I would want them to know is that it would be subject to local Board of Health, et cetera, et cetera. Like, that's what they really will want to know.
And so that's why I don't want to get too hung up on this first slide, because we have multiple slides and there are slides further that do address. The, um.
Should we just go through all the slides and then come back and modify?
Yeah, maybe that's a better, um, just for while you're, while you have your cursor there, just say this is zoning, not a construction plan. Or, or planned, not a housing, or not a construction plan, not a.
Not a requirement to build, maybe, keep it simple.
I just want people to know that they're not approving multifamily housing. They're approving a multifamily housing zone.
So you have the zoning district and bolded above that. And then if you note here, just saying not a, no, no requirement for building or construction.
I, I don't even know, I'm, I, I keep it simple, it's a zoning. Addie Mae's gonna stand there and address the meeting. I, I, I don't know, you really need the text there, I mean.
I, I think we do, I feel like there.
It's later in the presentation, so it, it's, we're spending a long time on slide, the first slide. Maybe we can cycle back when we've seen all of the slides or something.
That's fine.
And also, I mean, it's, yes, it's, it's zoning, but at some point, the state does intend that there would be something. And, um, I don't want to harp so much as saying it's not gonna forever be farmland.
Meredith has her hand up again, Addie.
Okay.
So, Addie, sorry, I was thinking maybe you could just note, since you are, this is the beginning of a longer presentation. Just note that long-term implications described, you know, in future slides or something like that. And I don't know.
Let's go through and see if we feel like there's a place to put that in, in the slide further down. I, I don't remember exactly, since Heidi thankfully did the bulk of this presentation. So I kind of scanned through it like you all did, um. Let's see Steph, if we'll move on from this slide, and the next one is compliance. Which, if we could put this, you know, not at the second, but if we put this in the format of the other slide. I guess it, is it just that the font is smaller in the other one, so there's more space?
Yeah.
So, um, and you know, some of this is the, the PowerPoint has the designer and mode. And so it, it does do this for us and, you know, I don't want to get too stuck on how it looks. Because at the end of the day, it's the content that's more important. And so, you know, what we're all familiar with is the compliance and our, the various deadlines. And we have, our deadline is December of twenty twenty five. Uh, as an adjacent community, and in order to make that compliance. That means having something passed at town meeting in twenty twenty four. The, there are a hundred and seventy seven communities that are considered adjacent. Or immediate, um, MBTA communities. And as of November twenty, set two, there's over a hundred communities have passed zoning districts already to comply. So this thought that there's nobody complying is not true, there've been a number of communities which have complied. And, um, as we show here in twenty twenty three, there was one out of compliance. Out of twelve rapid transit communities, communities having commuter rails in their town, twenty twenty four. There were a hundred and thirty adjacent communities that are in compliance and only one that's not. So, um, as much as the news has made us feel that everybody's not complying. This is something that communities are complying with and the implications for not complying have been pretty heavy.
Right, and, and I kind of want to stress, the one that talks about over a hundred communities have passed it. They're not in the compliance mode yet, um, or not, because there's a hundred and thirty that need to have the deadline. And the ones that haven't passed, like people say, well, I heard Rentham wrote it down, I heard this, you're only saying one out of compliance. Because they're not out of compliance yet. There are, you know, they got a twenty twenty four deadline. They got a few more weeks.
Does this table format work for people to replace the text bullets?
I was thinking of, even in textbook, you could just write, um, a hundred and seventy seven communities required. A hundred communities passed, twelve, uh, community, uh, two communities out of compliance, or one community out of compliance. And, you know, just fewer words or that table, either one was fine.
I think the table, I think the table.
If you can add that, a hundred and seventy seven.
Yeah.
Acquired, which actually the number can, you'll add a total, you can just do a total and it'll say a hundred and seventy seven, if you add another line.
I think you need more to it though.
Uh, I think we can add the table and then, um.
I just meant for these bullets, but, um.
May, maybe, maybe both of them would work if you, if you made the table smaller, it kind of supports.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking the type, table would only replace these bullets. Because it says it, all of the information from these bullets is in the table.
That's fine, yeah, I like that.
Right. Oh, oh, there we go.
Yeah, it's gotta be hard to find it on this, this is the zoom screen and.
Yeah, that, that, that works well, yeah.
If, do you have to put the word number in there? Can you just write communities and compliance, maybe that saves the space?
Well, communities is the big word, you can't, I think, I think this works. Oh, I see what you're saying, say, communities out of compliance instead of number out of compliant.
I didn't understand.
Maybe to, that on a third column, that I, I think that does make sense, I agree. See that communities out of compliance, because it's not the numbers out of compliance, it's the communities that are out of compliance, so.
I think you need something there, there to address towns like Sherburne that still haven't complied. That are on the path to.
I just put TBD because this, this doesn't close until December thirty first, right?
Yep, no, you're right.
So it's, it's one, but it's still to be determined.
Right.
And you can, you can verbalize, there's a handful that have voted. And there's still not technically out of compliance.
I mean, I don't know, on the deadline, do you even want to say, you know, twelve thirty one, twenty twenty three, twelve thirty one, twenty twenty four? Just to, you know, it's not the start of twenty twenty five, it's the. You know, that, that made our efforts to make these columns, but maybe make this font on the.
That's fine, I'll, I'll do it, I'll, I'll figure it out.
Maybe that continues with the bold theme.
Which.
Showing the smaller Jason, just kind of linking us, continuing that forward.
And I'll, I'll bold the deadline. Addie Mae, I don't know if you can see or not see, but Meredith has her hand up again.
Meredith, uh, feel free to speak, Meredith, I guess, um, we're trying to get more formal with the, back to open meeting.
I don't want to butt in.
And your address for, uh, attending.
Oh, yeah, thirty four Greenwood Street, Meredith Westalowski. I, I'm just, I'm just thinking of, uh, someone who's given a lot of talks and lectures and what. And if, if a word is presented by the presenter, compliance here, there's going to be the people who are rooting for that, that one. You know, they're gonna want to know, like, what is, what is it there, you know, putting themselves up? Right, what happens to them? There's gonna be the people, so if, if you can add that in with somehow, or at least have that.
Oh, there's a lot, that's, there's a lot of that in the PowerPoint.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I guess, I think, let's move on, um.
What if this was just compliance status, right? That's really what it is, it's not defining compliance.
Right, compliance status, yeah.
And Addie Mae, you might want to say on the presentation that you want, you'll take questions at the end of the presentation, that you'll get through the whole presentation first.
Yeah.
Because, so people will have, might have some things answered.
Right, when it's actual, when we have the hearing, I mean, for tonight, I, if we're going through slide by slide, I, I welcome feedback, so. Okay, so here is the present, this is the, um, nice visual of. Where we're at and who all these small communities are, um. So I think this is fairly self-explanatory, a map showing the kind of dark gray of zoning. Do the end of this fiscal, or not fiscal year, this calendar year, December thirty first, twenty twenty four. The dark blue are towns which have adopted a zoning overlay for multifamily development. And then the light blue, um, zoning's been adopted and submitted for review. And I'm assuming that's reviewed by EOHLC. And then the two yellows, one of them being Milton, which we're all familiar with, of non-compliant municipalities. And then the ones that are not shaded in any color, they, they are not considered MBTA communities. And they're not, um, required to create this zoning, so.
If, if you don't mind me asking, the, the point of this slide, uh, what are you trying to, beyond the previous slide? Which already has this exact same information, like, what way is this, how does this one help?
I think this slide is valuable because it just is a visual of kind of this, the state and where it sits, where we are in relation to Boston. And, um, I mean, it, could that map be included on this slide in front of me? Maybe?
Yeah, I think so. What if we make this the caption of the map?
There you go, yeah.
Right, the one seventy seven is already here, so I deleted that bullet. And then this doesn't need to be a bullet. This is just the caption of the map, to think about how to do this, and then move this guy here. I, you know, it's not ideal to make it.
It's just a visual, so.
Yeah, and I, I, you don't need to go blow by blow through the key, right? The, the yellow ones are too non-compliant, the blue, the various shades are ones that are, that have voted to go forward. And the gray is pending.
Yeah.
And there's Sherborne pending, and that's us.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, auto boxes, they make me crazy.
Yeah, I think it, it's actually nice having this visual on this slide.
Yeah.
Cut one slide down.
Okay, I can, I'm not a big fan of the template, I hear what you're saying Heidi, I don't have, I'm not a, a good visual person. So I don't have a better suggestion, but.
Uh, that's an improvement, I think.
Okay, no, I mean, the, the.
The design.
The design, yeah.
Losing real estate with the, like the color, there's, there's, there's no way to make that design move it over, I don't think there is, I think.
I think I can, yeah, I can probably choose a different template, like that one has only a little bit of on the top, but it just, that to me, I didn't really quite like.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so then we have the compliance levels. Um, I mean, I feel like we're kind of repeating a lot of.
Yeah, I don't think you need this slide.
Exactly.
Should I delete it or maybe just put it at the, hide it and put it at the end as a backup in case you want?
Well, I'll put it in my longer one online.
Is it in there? Can I just delete it from the shorter one here?
You can delete it from the shorter one, yep.
Okay.
We've already stressed the compliance, but I just wanted to again to say, if someone says, what do we have to do? I wanted one slide that just outlined it.
Yeah, I just flipping, it's kind of like, what is Sherburne required to do? And is there, we have, do we say the why, like, why there's, you know, the ramifications? I know you did somewhere.
Yeah, towards the end.
If this is a place to actually do that, or like to combine it, you know, what are we required to do? And if, if we don't.
I was using that towards the end of it to like wrap up, like, give the presentation for it, and then, then what happens if we say no? And what are asked?
I, I, I agree with that, I, I, maybe everybody's walking in expecting to say no and not like this.
Yeah.
But, but I think we should have a presentation, which is steadily going through, what's the current status? What are we required to do? This is the proposal and this is the process. That's where we've landed, and, oh, by the way.
Yeah.
Not, not doing this is, is, has consequences.
I mean, I wouldn't spend a lot of time on this slide, I mean, it all.
No, there's not much here, I mean, just basically straightforward, um. Yeah, we're doing, the hearing next Tuesday, are we, we're doing this hybrid or are we? Have we decided?
It's hybrid, it's hybrid.
Okay. Um, just as far as kind of trying to run, you know, I'm not as masterful as Steph is at actually running. You know, what's on my screen and managing Zoom, so, um, it'll be different if we're just in person at town hall, stepping through a slide. Yeah, I think that's, you know, pretty self-explanatory, what are we required to do, full compliance by the December thirty first, twenty twenty five. Town meeting of approval, um, of a multifamily overlay district. I mean, is there, what's people's sense of putting April town meeting approval of a, or do we?
Well, if you do that, then you should also do the, um, the dates for the other ones, and I don't really think it matters.
Well, if, let's say it's voted down in, in, in April, we still have a, um, a special meeting opportunity. So it's town meeting approval is what's required, it doesn't have to be in April, so I don't think we should.
Right, it's just.
Specify.
And it's, it's a great expense to town, if we have to do a second.
Yeah.
Meaning, so I guess it's ideal, I guess we can just say that, uh, you know, town meeting approval of multifamily overlay district. And we can put the, you know, as far as what happens if we don't approve it, then we, we still have a chance to, we can, well. Having a special town meeting, not necessarily a given, the town could choose to be not in compliance and base the ramifications. Or we go through the expense of a special town meeting, so.
I would let someone ask that question.
Yeah, the, this slide, it just, what are we required to do? We required to execute a ten meeting, we don't have to specify a date.
Okay.
I don't think.
Alright, so the next slide is.
This is an application following town meeting?
Yep.
Or is it a review?
Nope, it's an application.
Yeah, that's why the light blue, the, the, the blue on that graphic before was ones that have been, the application was approved.
I understand, I just, it's the terminology that I'm asking about, it just seems odd, but.
I, I, I know, but that's what it is.
So actually, what's town meeting approving? Is it approving?
The application.
A bylaw or an application?
It's not approving, it's approving a zoning district in the bylaw language, not the application. Because the application requires that you, you submit an approved district, so you need. An approved district, so you need a town meeting vote to approve, to apply.
Yep.
Should we, I mean, zoning district and by law, I mean, that's doesn't seem like too much to me to add. I feel like that's.
Right.
Yeah.
This is more.
So you don't think we should add that?
I I think you should, yeah.
I, yeah, I think it's.
I really don't. I mean, that could be brought up if somebody asks the question and you got enough slides, you you got five minutes' time. You're not going to have time to go through all that.
This is a public hearing. This is the public hearing, right? Do we have five minutes only?
No, we don't. No, not the public hearing. At at town meeting, you'll have five minutes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, this is for the public hearing, whi- which is our own public hearing of a zoning bylaw, so it's not, we have plenty of time.
I I can take it off if there's strong.
I think it's good. I think it's a good addition. If nothing else visually, and it's just a HQ of what does that mean?
The town meeting approval. Of the multifamily district approves the zoning district in the bylaw language, that's the purpose.
Okay. Next slide.
All right, so this is our road to compliance. And we.
Just, yeah, it's what what. We have done and are doing.
So we have. An approved action plan from EOHLC. When that approved action plan, that that action plan was approved.
Oh, I think I want to say twenty-three, was it January twenty-three sometime, and it was approved in twenty-three. I don't know exactly when, it was before me.
Yeah, I'd like to kind of have some of that reference in there. This is not, we're not springing this on anyone new. And. The proposed area of compliance. Pre-approval application to H, we've submitted that, right?
We've.
Right, that one is submitted. Yep, those are submitted. You can say fall of twenty-four.
As well as the draft bylaw, right?
Yep, that was already done. Yep.
It seems like there's almost an opportunity to merge this sheet with the previous one.
An opportunity to do what, Jim? What were you saying?
Merge this slide with the previous one.
Yeah, except for then everybody into the kind of the complaint that we have too many words on a slide. I mean, I. I.
I I agree with you, Jim, on on how you could do it. We could just, I mean, this slide could be Sherwin's approach to compliance. And you say what what you need to do to comply. Add that section in here.
Yeah.
If all you did was add the the pass that town meeting, then I think you you were the previous one.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, yeah, you're not. But this journey is, we're not required to do. All of those elements, are we?
Uh, these were optional, but everything else is required.
Okay, well, this is fine. This is Sherborne's approach, so we're not saying what we're, I I thought we were putting, yeah, this is good. I'd like. The requirement doesn't matter, actually. What's our approach, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, so what, you can get rid of the previous one.
I just wanted to move the town meeting onto here.
Yeah.
So this would be spring twenty twenty-five, and we don't have to say warrant article. We can just say town meeting, right? Warrant article is a natural.
Right.
Process of.
Right.
And then full application to. And that will also bring, these would also be spring twenty twenty-five, right?
I was going to say late spring or early summer, it'll probably be June. It'll be after town meeting, so.
Just say following town meeting.
Yeah. And same.
Just to following TM.
Okay.
And then adding me just reads the words, town meeting.
Yep.
Do we want to add any, this has been, this is like the second hearing and the third sort of, the third total public consultation. I'm just wondering if it's useful to document that there's been a series.
Yes, that's on the slide.
Okay.
So the proposed area isn't today, the the public hearing is today, right? So the proposed area was fall twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
What what are we talking about when we say proposed?
Well, we chose an area.
It was, it was chosen, the public, you know, the planning board has a responsibility to propose the area.
Yes, and then it was submitted in this pre-application and draft bylaw.
Right.
So I think.
Maybe in addition, I'm sorry, so, but maybe in addition to the checkmarks, that font, you reduce. The the color of it to a gray tone, showing that it's been completed already.
Okay.
Yeah.
And this one's a bullet, because this is the public hearing, right?
Yep.
And so then gray these, you're saying? I like that.
Yeah.
Even better, put a line through it.
Then what I might do is, it may, it may make the public hearing today, make that bold, just show where we are in the process.
Sure.
All right, that's good.
All right, next. And we've got three minutes until we are continuing the hearing for the scenic road. All right, so outreach to date.
This is just going to be a list.
Yeah. Uh, the initial proposal, is there, we have the date on that, that was, that was. September twenty twenty or twenty? Three.
It was sometime in twenty-three. I'd say fall of twenty twenty-three.
Just say twenty twenty-three. It's yesterday sometime.
You could put checkmarks for all of these, except the bottom one.
Yeah, make that bold.
Be consistent with the previous style, yeah.
I won't gray them, because it's.
Yeah.
Showing the process.
Yep.
Okay.
This was a public workshop.
Yep.
And then you should also be consistent with the dates. If you want to go twenty twenty-three, then then you shouldn't have, you know. Informational session, you know, Jan twenty twenty-four.
No, I think it's good to show the dates. I think that this.
I'm not saying it to the dates, I'm showing how to show the dates. You write it as twenty twenty-three, and then you got twenty-four, twenty-four. You know, and then you got the month.
Oh, this one.
All of them, yeah, just put them all in the same format, all twenty twenty-four, or just all, you know, just two, two-digit year.
Well.
Which one has a four-digit year, and the rest have two digits.
Only one that's four digits is twenty twenty-three, because we don't have the exact month on that, so I think.
Right.
It doesn't matter if you have the exact month on the information session and on the public hearing.
It shows a really steady outreach calendar. I think it's good to show the, that that these activities were all spread out over the entire year. If it all just says twenty-four, it, we could be taking one session and breaking it up into three bullets, you know?
I think, I think it's quite powerful.
I think so, too.
I just, all I meant was make it twenty twenty-four, that's.
Okay, all right.
You don't have to do that.
They they should all be consistent.
That was my point, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All righty, then, so we go to the initial concept, which.
We are at eight o'clock. I don't know if we, how strictly we have to.
Um, initial.
Do we need to start the hearing, Addie?
Oh, yes.
Hold on a second, one second. The guest of honor hasn't arrived yet.
No, but I think we still have to open.
We still want to open the hearing.
Eight o'clock.
And and technically, you know, he doesn't have to come on. It it's just, it'd be nice if he was there if there are any questions, but.
All right, so given that the hour is eight oh one, and we agreed to continue the hearing for the. Scenic Road Public Hearing for the driveway at sixty-five Farm Road, map eleven zero sixty A. We are, we continue to eight oh one, eight o'clock, we're opening the hearing now, eight oh one, recontinuing, sorry, reopening, continuing. Um, revisiting.
Do, do.
So.
Are we reopening? Do we need to move to open?
Well, you already opened, you just continue.
Okay, all right.
Do you want to say a vote to continue it and open?
All right, vote to.
We voted to continue it already, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, all right, let's just, just for formality, to make sure we're not missing something, vote to continue to to reopen. Uh, Addie Mae Weiss is I, Steph Harrison.
I am second.
Thank you. Uh, Frank Hook. Jim Guarino.
Hi.
And Robb.
All right.
Okay, so now we will just continue, continue discussion on. The application. For the Scenic Road Act hearing, this is because there is a stone wall. There is, this is not a tree hearing, as there were not deemed to be any trees in the public. Right away, there are some trees that are behind the stone wall, which are then considered on the. The property of the applicant and not subject to public shade tree. So this is only solely a stone wall. Hearing. Let's see, this is, the application was originally submitted October thirty-first, and then it was amended. With a new driveway location proposed on November twenty-first of twenty twenty-four. I'm trying to think of what's. As far. But do, do we want to, is it the the pic, Heidi, you shared with us a picture of the staked-out location for the driveway? I'm trying to think which is more valuable for us to be looking at, if we're screen sharing that or the the sketched.
I think both, but I just want, for the record, too, that it was published twice for two weeks in a row, eleven twenty-five and twelve-two. In the Metro West Daily News, and the assessor's list had been. Assertified, Butter's list was received from the assessor's office and notices were mailed to the residents.
And then as far as kind of the process, I will just read what our process is, and I mean. All right, so I'm just going to read the the process, Article One, Rules and Regulations. Section three eighty in our town code, three point one statutory provisions of the Scenic Road Act, Mass General Law, Chapter forty, Section fifteen C. Upon recommendation or request of the Planning Board, Conservation Commission, or Historical Commission of any city or town. Since we know that this, these, this road, farm road, has been designated a scenic road. So because it's been designated a scenic road. A public hearing must be held if there is to be any. Relocation, where's the stone wall? Because we're not dealing with trees here. Cutting removal trees, that's the trees, where's the stone? All right.
Well, under the three point five definitions, there's stone walls. It describes what it is and that the picture shows what it is. This is over, we had the one cubic feet, what we looked up the definition of before, stone wall.
Yep, the stone walls shall not be construed to be an assemblage of stone involving less than one cubic foot of wall material for a linear foot. Not totaling less than five feet in length, all stone walls within the entire right-of-way or scenic road or boundaries thereof shall be subject to these regulations. Um, and it had been determined that there is a stone wall here, so if we want to pull up the picture, maybe that's. Of the, that's been shown.
Then Addie Mae, three point seven, Design Standards for Driveways, B, Stonewall Removal Limitations. That's where you're going to concentrate on what the planning board is looking at. Sorry, it was a.
So I think. Yeah, there was another part of the code that I had pulled up earlier that was more clear. What I was looking for, I'm sorry that I. Steph, you want to show the picture here?
I mean, I can, but I'm a little confused. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page about what we're looking at and what decisions, what actions we're trying to.
Right, and that's where, I guess that part of the code, I'm just trying to pull up now. I mean, that's part I wanted to read, actually. Let me pull that part up. Code, and I tried to print it.
I will say that the town. Bylaws have a definition of stone wall, and this does meet the definition. I I, we looked that, I looked that up after the last meeting, so we are, we definitely. Um, are looking at a stone wall.
And then it's just, there's stone wall, limited removal limitations. It said where stone walls exist, the maximum amount of stone wall to be removed shall be the width of the driveway or the new road at the location of the stone wall. Plus three feet on each side. So I think that's going to decide the scope of what.
Yeah, I was trying to find, I read it earlier and I cannot, on our town website, the code is. Why is it not on the homepage? I can't, is it somewhere?
It is on the homepage somewhere.
The stone has to be reused within the wall, and then where the.
I know, but I wanted to, there's actually what the planning board responsibilities are, and I really wanted to read that, because that is very clear of where we're at. And I can, I had it up earlier today, and I cannot find the code on our town website. Where is it?
It's, I've got it up. I can share it. Just tell me what section to go to.
Find the code and then put under, if you open the code and insert stone wall, I mean, if you actually want to shake, screen share.
I'm trying, I'm trying to, just trying to move as fast as I can.
Sorry, I was trying to print and I didn't get it.
Any stone wall affected by a proposed driveway, if on a scenic road and within the right of way, I show.
Click the.
So if you look at procedure three point three eight zero dash three point eight. There's a section E that says decision, the planning board shall make the decision as soon as practical, and then it has. Uh, five bullet points, and then there's the considerations after that, which is.
Right, if it, is it under, okay, yes, I think.
Three eight oh.
Yes. Yes, procedures, so this is the procedure that we have. Procedure is. We have a plan, the plan that we were, been given, and and there's some discussion of. The the applicant has submitted a plan, showing the location and description. And the reason for the proposal is for a driveway. And we are understanding that the applicant has sent the. Butters within five hundred feet of the proposed new curb cut. And a notice. And our task at hand is to. Only really look at the stone walls. Now, in conjunction.
Well, here's the decision part.
The decision. We can make it, we we make a decision, but we are, we are not approving a curb cut. Only the Public Works Director can approve the curb cut. And it is my understanding that the applicant has not submitted this driveway. This particular driveway for a curb cut. Approval, so driveway permit.
Here's what we're to consider. In our decision.
Right, so we can look at what we've been presented. And we can look at. What's there? I mean, as far as. The public safety, there's two driveways across the street, so I mean, I don't know how much we can. I mean, I I, we're not approving the curb cut, that really is in. The, that the curb cut and actual, that location for a driveway is is really. Is that, that permit happened at the public works level. And that application has not been submitted to the public works director, and this is something, again, this is separate from our hearing. This is a process problem that we would like to, we, this has come up before. Where we could go through a hearing, and we can look at the stone wall and say, okay, where this, where this drawing is saying that a curb cut is going to go. We're looking at the existing stones and what we recommend, and we make. curb cut is gonna go, we're looking at the existing stones and what we recommend, and we make, um, a decision on those stones. But if the public works director looks at that location and says, no, the driveway should really be moved five feet this way or five feet that way, then if we've made a decision based on what's been planned, presented, and the driveway is going to be moved, then we would have to have a new hearing.
And, and the considerations that we should be looking at is the scenic and aesthetic, aesthetic characteristics, the public safety, the accident history within five hundred feet, location and setback of telephone lines related to pavement, trees, and stolen walls, uh, traffic volume congestion, preservation of neutral, natural resources, environmental, historic value, uh, recreational use of the road, taking into account the nature and extent, relationship of the road design and standards, uh, compensatory action proposed as a replacement of trees or walls, and financial and other con- uh, consequences, uh, of design revision to avoid reduced damage to trees or stone walls.
As well as evidence that may be contributed by abutters, I think we might have some abutters on the call today. Or on, in the hearing today.
Mr. Fano has his hand raised.
Are, are we taking public comment yet?
Not yet, I'd like to pull up the sketch and the picture.
Okay.
And so this is what is being proposed. Um, and again, yes, the planning board, it says that we're supposed to look at. I mean, we, we. If a driveway, for purposes of a driveway, I mean, a driveway is, we have to allow a driveway at some point for a lot, we couldn't, we can't just say, oh no, we don't want a new driveway. Um, where that driveway exactly goes, that's the public works directors permitting process. So what we have before us is we're really looking at it's being proposed that a driveway is cut here, and so we're looking at the existing, you know, yes, we, we're looking at the existing stone walls in that spot, so the, the regulations that talk about the aesthetics and all of that is really only relevant to this ten foot cut, not the entire property.
Well, the question I had is, I didn't see any dimensioning on this, and what is the actual width of the wall that they're planning to remove?
Um, he didn't measure that, right, it's usually a ten foot width, but I don't know, like, that's, I mean, I have a little bit of a problem with this plan because there's no clear measurements on this plan. I mean, it's, it shows that it's a hundred and sixty feet from the existing driveway, but I don't know north or south, I mean, we kind of all know the road, so.
Well, by the scale of that, it's, you see, it's set in the middle of that a hundred and fifty one feet of frontage, and so it looks like it's a, a lot more than ten feet, I'm guessing it's twenty five or thirty by what I see there, but I don't know. Um, so yeah, there, I have two questions, one is, how much are they going to remove? And the other is in the design standards, it says no wall shall be cut without construction of an appropriate terminus, and it lists the appropriate kind of endpoints you can put there, so it seems like the plan ought to specify that.
Right, but I mean, I guess that, that is, that, that, that is a, an area that, I mean, planning boards throughout the Commonwealth, anytime we're dealing with a scenic road, you do, that's where we do take into the kind of existing, to public, you know, what's existing aesthetics that are there to all of a sudden require kind of a big heavy balustrade when it's been, I mean, what's there is the remnants of a classic. You know, it's an old stone wall, so some of those stones have gotten buried, and they're, they are looser, it's not, um, you know, some parts of town are more the, those, the walls are more prominent, I mean, of course, roots and things have overgrown.
So the, the, the width is staked and.
I mean, I looked at it today, and I thought it would, I should have measured, um, I didn't have anything to, like, actually hook onto one side to to get the exact width of this stake area, and again, our plan does not tell us what width it is.
Um, but it, it's says that the, the plan and a description of the proposed changes to stone walls, do we have that full submission? That the nature of the proposed action and the description of the proposed changes is what was supposed to have been submitted? I mean, it is staked, so we can like.
It's staked, and I, unfortunately, we're dealing with a precedent, and we have not spelled out, we, we have other town, I mean, other applicants through the years that essentially have submitted a packet similar to what we have in front of us.
Okay.
There, I, I do again, think that there's a process issue, and, and that maybe we need to be more, we, this is again, another homework thing of somehow expanding on what does the plan need to show in our rules and regs somewhere, because, I mean, measurements, there's no requirement here that says measurements, but I thought, I think it's the intent, but we don't have any measurements.
Um, Bob is on the call, you could ask him how wide that.
Oh.
Call it.
Yes, Bob, could you please tell us what is the width of that staked area? What's the width of this proposed driveway?
Fifteen feet.
Fifteen feet.
Fifteen feet is the width of the stone wall opening or the driveway?
Fifteen feet is the, uh, the driveway stuff.
The driveway apron, like.
So the, so the apron out to the road, you're right, would be a bit wider than that, sure.
Okay. So the driveway width, does that correspond to the stone wall?
It's probably a, you know, just looking at the, the splaying of it, it's probably a foot on either side wider, so it goes from fifteen to seventeen, something like that.
So fifteen foot driveway width, seventeen foot stone wall, cut.
Sure.
Cut.
That sounds right to me, yes.
Um, Bob, do you know, with the section that was staked that we have a picture of, do you know what the width of that is?
That is staked at fifteen feet, and keep in mind, frankly, to the extent, huh, yeah, that's at a quite an odd angle, obviously, to it. Um, but keep in mind that, um, the, the actual curb cut to the extent required, and in this case, I can't, I can't really see why. Um, but we have the ability to shift it right or left. Um, and, you know, even over on Greenwood, I went over there literally and looked at it and said, well, I can save this tree by moving the driveway two feet to the right, and so I did. Right? In other words, I, I'm with you guys. Saving trees, that's a good thing, you know, it's good for the, good for the homeowners, it's good for the town, it's good for all of us. Um, I don't have to pay to cut them down even, I mean, it's all good, so, uh, in this case, I don't recall, Heidi, there being any trees in the, um, uh, in that, uh, break in the rubble there.
No, you went, the wa, the stake was right before that tall tree that showed.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get them side by side, because I think it, it's the, the, um, the perspective is a little bit skewed, because one is taken from one side and the other is taken from the other side.
Yeah.
Although I'm not sure that, I, we would try to save that, uh, larger tree, although I'm not sure that's, in fact, I know it's not in your purview. Um, because it's back of the stone wall.
Right, again, this is not a tree hearing, a public shade tree. It's only the stone wall that's in the public, that where we have any jurisdiction over.
Exactly.
The Greenwood driveway location, Bob, was, um, there was no stone wall, and, um, so therefore, we did not have a hearing, and the challenge that we do have tonight is we have a hearing, so we are, a, a decision is based on exactly what's been presented.
Yep.
And not having a curb cut permit, if there needs to be a change adjusted, then technically we'd have to hold a second hearing, or we can continue this hearing to, until a driveway permit application has been approved.
Well, I'm not sure I understand the intersection of the two regulatory requirements, in other words, I fully intend, obviously, to apply for a driveway permit, which would uh, include lots of things, particularly because it's likely in the future to be uh, longer than whatever your threshold, I don't remember what it is off the top of my head. Um, whatever yours, I think it's three hundred feet, um, it's likely to ultimately be longer than three hundred feet, so we have to meet all of your requirements under the driveway regulation, I've reviewed them, and, you know, I, I've determined that I can with a good engineering, meet all of those requirements, but I don't think there's anything in your regulations about the scenic road issue that says we have to have a driveway permit first. Um, it wouldn't, it wouldn't make any sense.
The location, I mean, we, we, we're examining as a planning board, we're examining this particular, now, it's, you know, very clear, it's been, we've been told it's fifteen foot that's staked out, so we're looking at this fifteen foot segment of the driveway, if it tends, if it turns out that that needs to shift or change, then we are looking at a different section of the, you know, location for review of the stone wall, I mean, granted, it's, we're looking at the stone wall, at least only, I'm talking about stone wall, so, I mean, a technicality.
I understand, I guess, I would say that, um, you know, if you wanna give me a permit for something a little bit, why, in other words, I staked it, I can build it right there, so if you approve it right there, I'll build it right there, and if I Yeah, well, you're granted, you're, you're approving the cut in the stone wall, obviously, that's what we're here tonight doing, right? You're approving the
Right, whether or not.
Removal of that rubble in that area, and, uh, I mean, I don't know how to say it any more elegantly than that.
Alright.
I wouldn't worry about the fact that there isn't a, a, a permit for the curb cut. If things change, there may or may not have to be technically a revised process, but let's assume that there isn't one, and that this is where the work will be done. And then any decision is, is exists for two years, so you, the, there's a window to get all the other things sorted out. And if something changes, then, and that, that makes the decision invalid, then we can confront that when, as and when it happens.
I appreciate that.
Saying, there's a choice of either we, we review this and we say, okay, we make the, just, the decision contingent on a permit, a driveway per, the driveway permit being for this location, or we continue the hearing so that, um, if it's, needs to be changed, and you don't have to re-advertise a whole new hearing, you would just continue, and once you have the driveway permit, then you'd say, yep, that, we, we would just visit and say this, okay, this is the definite location of the driveway, and this is the definite location of the stones that we're talking about.
I guess I'm, I'm not understanding, I may why you think the permit is, might, uh, that, uh, the, the, when I come and seek a permit, why it wouldn't be granted, or you, do you have concerns about it from a driveway permit perspective?
Um, yeah. I don't know, I mean, it just, that's not, let's proceed, we will, we'll, we'll make it contingent. Oh, you know, and I guess then I discussed it, so, um.
I do think, if the, if the, if what's staked out is fifteen feet, and the driveway is fifteen feet, and it's actually expected to be a little bit flared, I do think we need state what we're approving, so if it's removal of, s, you know.
Seventeen feet of.
Should be specified in, in the decision.
Yes.
There, there is, that there is in the, in, in our regs, that there's a, a certain amount of stone on either side of the driveway beyond the, this, the width of the driveway that.
I think it was three feet, wasn't it?
Right, three feet. So even if it is sixteen feet, it's, it'll, it's within that buffer.
Yeah, so if we, if we approve it with the driveway indicated by the stakes, we would then be approving.
Twenty one feet of stone wall.
To, up to twenty one feet to accommodate the, the building. Yeah.
And I think we all know it's likely to look a lot better from a stone wall when it's done than now, uh, so I think it's, it's to the good, um, at least on that aspect.
Um.
And like I said, we, we, we moved it there to avoid cutting, even though that tree's not in your purview, uh, we moved the driveway a smidge in order to avoid cutting the tree, because like I said, that's in everybody's best interest.
Yep, yeah, it's nice to have shade trees, even if they're not in a public right of way, they do still provide shade when they're reached that size, so thank you for that. Um, as far as kind of the process, and I know that the, the language does say kind of the recommendations on the wall. Um, you know, it does say that we do have in our design standards the requirement for a construction of an appropriate terminus, and I guess that's something I'd like to discuss with the planning board, whether yeah, I think um, uh, section or point one, uh, of, under B, it says, unless otherwise waived, removed stones shall be used to repair other sections of the wall along the road, which I think is a nice feature. I, I do wonder about um, having, you know, big giant requirement of big giant posts at the break in the wall, when you've got the kind of aesthetics of this country road is that would make it feel very formal, so, but I'd like to have planning board weigh in on this. Um, Jim, I'm gonna have you sit, because I look to you as our, our resident architect here.
Yeah, I, I was just questioning, um, Mr. Murchison, if you intend to restore that entire length of wall or improve that similarly, um, you know, it's a, it's a relatively short wall, I don't know that some of the suggest, so, some of the options in the terminus would be appropriate. They, they might be, but, uh, it's, it's, it's a short wall, I, I think huge granite post might be proportionally out of place. Um, but I, I'm just curious to hear more what you're.
Yeah, to be, to be honest, Jim, I, I haven't really gotten that far, in other words, um, you know, there's a regulatory requirement here, right, and then there's a kind of good neighbor requirement of what you, what you build, obviously, these are gonna be nice houses, and I anticipate we're gonna want it looking, you know, cleaner than it is. Will it be a, uh, you know, a mortared, beautiful, brand new New England stone wall? Maybe, uh, but I have to come.
That may not be appropriate either.
I, I, but I'd have to come to you to get permission to do it, if I wanted to anyway. Uh, and I, I fully know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I've built stone walls for good distances on Lake Street and worked through the process with you all, and, you know, I think that everybody was pleased with the result here, I don't know if uh, you know, we'll be doing that level of, of, uh, New England mortared wall, or whether we'll kind of stack the rubble up um, in a, a more organized fashion than it is today, uh, which I think would meet the regulatory requirements, but maybe not the aesthetic requirements, um, so I think it's, it's an open question, I'm not dodging you, I just don't know.
Yeah, no, it's just an oppor, it, it's just something that I'm offering as an opportunity to
Yeah.
to improve that, and, and if you had other intentions other than the curb cut, but.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I haven't gotten that far, you know, it's a, this is a, you know, an editor of process, the reason I'm coming to you first is because you're the first thing, right? I have to get permission to go through the wall, and then I get permission, uh, from Addie May and Sean and Chris, uh, to on the, you know, the engineering of the driveway, which will come next, once this approval is in place, so it's and you will get another bite at the apple, because I'm sure I'll wanna come back and do something along the road that will look nicer than it does today, and you'll get a chance to weigh, you know, weigh in a lot on that.
Great.
Does anyone on the planning board have any other comments or questions about this?
What do you plan on doing with the, the stones that, uh, will be open, will be redundant as a result of the driveway, you know? Near the driveway, I, you, you mentioned doing some fixing up of it and reusing a few of it, but.
Yeah, I mean, I would imagine at a minimum, Frank, we would take the stones that we're removing from that, whatever it is, eighteen, twenty feet, whatever it is, um, and try to stack them nicely on either side and create a, an entrance. Like I said, I reserve the right to come back and seek your approval for something more, more substantial, but at a minimum, we would just take those stones and kind of try to stack them a little more neatly on either side.
And I think that would, I mean, our, the precedent among planning board past decisions has been, uh, requirement that the stones be used among, along the length of the wall to fill in existing stone wall, so. existing stone wall. So unless other one feels, anyone feels differently, something I would think we would continue with that um, process.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, I I don't remember, does does Farm Road have a land taking for the right of way, or is it just considered to be public up to the stone wall?
Uh, it.
It was my understanding, Rob, I went to Gino a while back on this topic. And what I was told by Gino, I'm have no expertise beyond being told by Gino that that stone wall was the, uh, town right of way. Because when we looked at this long, well, really more back to when I was working on fifty-three Farm Road. Um, we were trying to decide what what trees were in your purview because there was a lot of dead nasty trees that needed to come out. And when he came out and we walked the site, he told me that he believed the stone wall was the definition of the town's right of way. But again, you know, I don't.
Throughout town, I mean, sort of, um, exact surveying, I mean, in general throughout town, when we're looking to determine whether a tree is in the public right of way, because we're, we, um, we use the stone walls. We tell that because the the public right of way tends to, you know, basically all that, most of the streets in our town, there's sixty-foot right of way, but clearly the asphalt is not sixty feet wide. And so, um, and then you can't necessarily just take the center line and go thirty feet on either direction either, because the that that asphalt, not necessarily directly in the middle of that sixty-foot right of way stretch. So again, for a lack of, um, unless we were to you know, an expensive survey every single instance, which is not feasible, um, it is the kind of the best practice is we do use the stone walls as the border for most instances. So in this case, the, anything in front of the stone wall is considered public right of way, and anything behind the stone wall is considered, um, not. So any trees behind the stone wall are not in our jurisdiction.
And then really big, ugly, nasty trees growing up in the stone wall, I'm giving to you so that Sean can take care of them.
Um, Eddie, may I have a comment? If I may.
Yep, absolutely.
Um, I'm just gonna share my screen. Uh, I'm, I have Google Maps Street View showing up here. So this is the new house on the left, we're moving east. So the way I understand it, the stone wall is kind of just beyond this new house, right? Over in this vicinity.
That sounds about right.
Across the other two driveways.
Sh- sure, but my point being that were we looking at a stone wall like what is on the right side of the street here? We would have, I would have a very different opinion about how to approach this, but the fact is that we're looking at a stone wall that is a pile of rubble, as Bob put it. Um, I would like to say that my opinions of the development and its scale and its density and its burden on the neighborhood, especially with respect to water resources, is not coming into play in this scenic road hearing. When I think about the spirit of the scenic road act, I do not feel that a cut in the stone wall at the proposed location, at the proposed width, trying to just get those two pictures that I had so beautifully lined up next to each other, um, is in any violation of the aesthetics of this scenic road on this side of the street in this particular location. So, um, that's kind of my, my opinion where I'm, where I am right now. Um, in in with my scenic road act blinders on, you know, that's the lane we're in today and um, I don't feel like this this stone wall that cu- cutting a foot on either side of this survey stakes is a blight on the scenic road, Farm Road.
Thank you, Steph. Um, if everyone in the planning board has had a, a spiel that they've had a chance to say something, I would open it up. Since this is a public hearing, I will open this up to anyone in the, um, community who is attending tonight and wishes to say something, if there's anyone who wishes to. Okay. Okay, Art Fano, if you'd like to say something.
Some challenge with Zoom, there we go. Uh, Arthur, front of fifty-eight Farm Road, uh, I first like to say, thank you, that's my stone wall across the street. Uh, we put a lot of time and effort repairing that when we moved in, and I think it does improve the aesthetics of the street. Um, that said, and and I understand that this has been the wall across the street has been described as rubble and a pile of rocks and all of that. Uh, and there are lots of stone walls around the town, which I have historic significance and not all of them are uh, what I would consider to be sort of to the level of the stone wall that we reconstructed outside our house. But nonetheless, I think they have significant historic and aesthetic uh, value to the town, uh, much like all the trees do on Farm Road. Uh, Farm Road is a designated scenic road and it does require extra protections. And one of the only protections that we get as residents and the butters is the decisions of the planning board and other boards to protect it. Um, I I understand that there are certain, uh, the 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 development of the properties across the street for me is under pace and underway and under other boards, and I get that. Um, I am, I I don't think it's like secret to probably anybody here, but certainly not to, uh, the developer. Uh, I I'm not in favor of that. Uh, when we moved in, it was a horse farm, it was bucolic, it was aesthetic. It was literally people would stop and take pictures. I, and, uh, the development of that, whether by right or whatever, that's another discussion, uh, has I mean, I'll just say, like, my opinion has ruined it or will ruin it. Uh, not to mention it's going to be years and years of construction and trucks and other things which will damage the, um, scenic nature of the road. So I respect that not all stone walls look like they are perfectly manicured and have been repaired. Uh, but I do think they contribute in their own way and have, and people who've driven on Farm Road for years and years and decades uh, have appreciated them in their current state as they are. And I respectfully request of this board, uh, say, no. Uh, that to keep things the way they are, and if the developer wants to repair it and make it look like the stone wall that I have outside my house, great. Um, but in terms of, um, I guess, uh, uh, destroying the aesthetics or uh, changing the aesthetics in a way that I think is detrimental to the nature uh, and, um, eucolic scenery of Farm Road, I think it's not in the interests of the town. I think it's not in the interest of the butters, and I think it's, uh, the duty and obligation of this board, um, to say no. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Moore.
Hi, good evening, Brian Moore, uh, forty-nine Farm Road. Mayor and I live obviously right next door to fifty-three, fifty-five, sixty-five lots, and, uh, I share many of the opinions that Arthur just so eloquently expressed. Um, the one thing I wanted to mention was that, you know, like Arthur, when when we moved in, we had uh, stone wall problems, which it's like seeing a dentist, it gets ignored for years and years, and then you go in and you need some work. And we had some done, and if anyone drives by right across from the bottom of, uh, Great Rock, you'll see that we had the the wall repaired and we have a nice wall going along the top, it's called a lace wall. And, um, we've also worked on the wall on both sides with our other neighbors, including Bob. And I would ask that the board, if they do, you know, I'm I'm not in favor of the project, but if you do go ahead and improve this project, I think that patching the space between the, um, where they currently have a car path right now would be very, very uh, good to take the rocks out of those sections that are removed and patch it so it's a continuous flow. Uh, what will be apparently now two driveway cuts through that into lot sixty-five. And then the other question I had, which is more of a, like administrative question, is whether or not the uh, applicant needs to provide access to the easement he granted to the previous owner for the corner of the lot where they're allowed to park a trailer and take horses out to the back. Right now, that's a stone wall also. So hopefully, whatever authorization or approvals you grant tonight are contingent on things like that uh, during your review process. Thank you very much.
Yeah, for clarification, this is oh, we are not approving a curb cut, that is the Public Works Director's um, decision, and he needs an application. So we are operating under an assumption that this specific location is where a curb cut would be approved, which is why how we, uh, I, my recommendation is that our decision is contingent upon the Public Works Director approving the curb cut driveway permit at this specific location. Um, and so for us, it's all that we have in front of us is a decision on what happens with those stones in that twenty-one feet at 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 most, twenty-one feet of stone removal. Um, and, uh, you know, we can't deny we c- we can't say well, I mean, I guess there are instances where a stone wall, I guess we have to take into account the reasoning for a stone wall removal. And, um, when it is for a driveway, um, curb cut, then it's different than just someone wanting to take down a stone wall. So as far as denial, um, that that comes into play and how planning board decides. And so I don't think this is an instance because this is for a driveway and not just um, building something else. I don't think we have really a, an ability to say no. Uh, I think our, our decision is limited to what our recommendation is for what happens with those stones that are being moved to accommodate a driveway curb cut. Anyone disagree with that on planning board?
I guess I don't understand the intersection of the public works and the driveway, the rights of having a driveway cut. I I would think that there would be some lateral for the planning board to say no. Um, because this is a, an approval process here, it's not a, the equivalent of like an A and R. But, um, but at the, on on the same token, uh, Mr. Fano, I can a- appreciate that you're really not, um, in favor of the of the proposed development, but that really, it doesn't have a bearing on the decision at hand today, and we cannot take, um, we, we just simply can't take it into consideration as part of a scenic road stone wall hearing, um. But that's my understanding at least. And so please, uh, you know, planning board, please correct me if I'm misunderstanding here. Um, I, um.
Can I, can I clarify just to address that? Do you mind?
Sure.
And so that's, that's not what I'm saying. I mean, I am opposed to the development, but I'm also opposed to what I sort of think of as insult to injury. And after moving the stone wall, so that is before you. And I do see in the regulations that I have to Addy May's point. It says after a road has been designated as a scenic road, any repair, maintenance, reconstruction, or paving work done with respect thereto shall not involve or include the cutting or removal of trees or the tearing down or destruction of stone walls or portions thereof, except with prior written consent of the planning board. So I read that as a veto. So I think that is within the board's jurisdiction. Now, you may decide differently. You may decide it looks like a pile of rubble, you may decide it looks better otherwise, but I I disagree, and those, that's the opinions I'm expressing. But it's, it's not because I'm opposed to the development that I'm opposed to the moving the stone wall. Those are, those are two independent things. I am opposed to both of them. Thank you.
Yeah, I just.
Can I ask a question? Sorry, uh, I I'm just curious, there is the the current driveway and then there's the new one. Um, will the old driveway continue to be used and in place, or is it this considered actually something where that would no longer be used?
That's a fair question. I mean, the, with drawing, we have shows two separate lots that I don't know that is this lot?
I can share it. So you don't have to hold up your paper, Eddie May.
Andy, as a practical matter, I'm asking for a very specific thing. I'm happy to answer your question separately.
Yeah.
Um, but it's, it's not particularly germane to the, uh, what's before you tonight, but I'm more than happy.
Well, okay, but but is it fair to say though, that that as currently drawn, there is a lot that doesn't have any driveway?
Is that this, this red lot line, is that what you're?
So, so, so to clarify, Andy, I'm before you tonight with the proposed driveway on the left, and I'm asking for the ability to move this, uh, stones out of the way. And then I'll seek a driveway permit as we've discussed. So that's, that's what's before you tonight. Over to the left, you're right, there is an existing gravel driveway. I anticipate that that existing gra- gravel driveway. I'm sorry, I'm distracted by Brian's, uh, chat. Um, the existing gravel driveway doesn't have any stones in it. Um, so to the extent I wanted to use that as a a curb cut for a house that would be right in that general area, I would not need to come back before you uh, to seek any approval, because there is no stone there, right? I would need a driveway permit, um, for the separate lots and fully intend to seek that. Um, what is, what should be the good news in all of this, to be honest, is that just to the right of that, not, well, not just to the right, substantially to the right, actually. Uh, it's off plan from in this drawing. Uh, I received approval from the Conservation Commission to put in a twenty-foot wide driveway um, going up into the back of the property. What, you are the first step tonight in not, my not doing that. So, you know, the the conservation folks ought to be doing cartwheels. Um, because I will not be doing the driveway if I do this driveway, which I'm seeking, uh, uh, scenic road approval on tonight. I will not be doing the twenty-foot wide asphalt driveway running, uh, you know, much, much further to the right and closer to the pond. Um, that goes away. So, you know, I think it actually is something that's good uh, for me and good for the community to have a driveway in this new location that I'm before you tonight about, uh, and not doing it substantially to the right of the existing gravel drive, gravel driveway. Have I confused you, Andy, or does that make?
No, I, I'm, I'm, I'm following it, and I, I think it, my original question is kind of moot. So that's, that's been helpful. Thank you.
Right, sure.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's, uh, you know, again, I know that as a town, trying to get things done can be complicated and you know, every board has got different steps and you're juggling a lot of different steps here. I think part of the complication here is that right now, what we, we know is you have one lot and you have a driveway for that one lot. And there's talk of other lots, but we have not received an A and R or other lots. So I guess a planning board would say you know, no, we don't want, you know, okay, we, if you want a stone wall removal here because you need driveway here, then you would fill in the other driveway. That's historically what we've done in past. If it, if a property has a driveway, if a parcel.
It's a hundred and forty, it's a hundred and forty feet away, obviously.
Right, and I guess the, the situation is, is, um, you know, again, you've got, you're showing lot lines. And, um, I guess to the point of, we, you know, what is the precedent of planning board and approving, um, that, that, that would normally be the precedent. We would say, okay, you, 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 you want to change the driveway, but we're, we're not necessarily changing the driveway location because there's an understanding that this will be a separate lot, but we don't.
I, I can, I can kind of, it, from my perspective, um, as the person trying to build these four homes on fourteen acres. I look at the regulations and I say, well, um, before I do an A and R and before I, uh, in in this case, even engineer a driveway, why would I engineer a driveway before I find out from the town if they're going to allow me to remove the stone wall, to put in the driveway that I would then get approved by you and by Sean and by Chris, right? The, you know, the, under the driveway law. So there's a, there's a natural kind of sequencing of all of this work, um, that happens and I And I will come, I'll be required to come before you at the appropriate time and seek an A and R, an endorsement of an A and R. That will happen, absolutely. But tonight, what's going on is just one really, really narrow topic among a whole number of things that have to be done to build four homes in Sherbon on fourteen acres. And I'm gonna do all of those things and I'm going to do them sequentially in a way that's compliant with the regulations and that makes sense from, you know, my perspective. I don't want, why would I spend a bunch of money to engineer a driveway? When you haven't told me I can move the stones out of the way, right? There's a natural order of approvals. And if your regulations are specific and say no, you can't do a scenic driveway until you have a driveway permit, then guess what? I'd go get my driveway permit first and then I'd be back to you with this story, right? In other words, it's all I know it 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 can be very, very complicated, particularly for the public. You guys get I I think the Planning Board gets all of this because it's fairly straightforward and it's how you always operate. But for the public, it's not always obvious what the process is. And I'm just here tonight to to move those rocks, uh, to to get a permission to move those rocks so that I can then get uh submit a uh a driveway for a driveway permit from you, Addie May and and Sean and Chris. And once you approve that, and then, you know, I have two of the approvals from the Board of Health. Um, uh, if I make changes to the lot lines, which may well happen because of this driveway, I'll be in front of the Board of Health to let them know they've approved a septic system, but they need to reapprove the lot lines and the location of the driveways. And I'll I'll do all of those things. It's very, and it's not really complicated, but it's a lot of steps. As you said, Eddie, there's a lot, a lot of steps in this. And I need to do them in a certain order. It doesn't work. Um.
Eddie May, were you were you referring to the potential replacement of a driveway and thus replacement in the cut of a stone wall and taking stones from this new cut and moving them to the existing cut as an alternative to a cumulatively an additional cut in the stone wall? Is that what you were getting at?
I mean, I just, that's what's happening. Other instances, when you have if you're looking at a new driveway when there's already an existing driveway, but it's our understanding that this is for a cut in the stone wall for a new driveway on a new lot, essentially. And of course, that's the kind of conundrum a little bit that we're dealing with, which, again, we keep kind of bumping up against with which comes first, chicken or the egg with the the whole permitting process too, in that if the location gets reviewed and the Public Works Director says, oh, there's a sightline issue and it needs to be moved, then we've looked at it, we've made a decision based on a specific section of stone wall. I know this has come up um a couple of years ago on Mill Street and, you know, then we had the Planning Board had approved a section of a certain section, but then it had the the sightline wasn't good and it had to be changed. And so then we had to go back and open the hearing. Um, so that was.
That's fine. But I mean, we can do that process if we need to, right? Unless there's a reason to think that.
Contingent upon the applicant receiving, you know, that our decision is contingent upon the applicant receiving a
Sure.
Works driveway permit at this at the at the location where we're deciding tonight, which is fine. That's totally doable and um would be my recommendation. So and I guess I mean, um, my motion or inclination would be to approve this opening of the stone wall with the recommendation to follow the guidelines that we have in our town code um for the walls that get moved to be used to bolster up the rest of the existing wall. And um, and I guess my only recommendation is I discussed earlier and also um Jim Greerina weighed in on that, the requirement for a bolster end cap. Um, I feel like would look out of place with the current nature of the wall. But unless I guess that would be what my thoughts would be, and that's where um I don't know if everyone on the board agrees.
You have more public comment?
Um, Mr. Moore, yes.
Sorry, uh, Brian Morgan, forty nine Farm Road. I just had a quick question um for the board. I mean, the 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 applicant has put in front of other town boards, several other town boards over the period of two or three months. Um, a different development plan, which does not reflect what I believe he just said. I'm just trying to clarify. If he just stated that he wants to put in this one uh cut to the wall to accommodate a single entrance to sixty five Farm Road for one, two, or three, or four house lots. That's entirely inconsistent with what he has already submitted and received approval for from both the Board of Health and from Conservation Commission. So I think all boards, including your board, would benefit from a single set of plans that show this is what we want to do so that we have some kind of starting point to move forward from. Right now, the problem is the starting point, there is no starting point. It's a a series of moving targets for your board that contradicts with what was submitted to Conservation Commission and what was submitted to the the Board of Health. And so if the applicant has a single set of plans that would show two, three, four lots, whatever he's planning, um, it would be beneficial, I think, for everyone, including your board to see what the intent is, including things like uh which might not fall in front of your purview, but you might consider to be relevant when you're talking about things like flooding and cutting in stone walls and putting in new driveways and pavement in an area that's prone to flooding. You know, I would hope that all of the town boards and commissions could be on the same page with the same set of plans so that you could move forward in a constructive fashion to assist the applicant in, you know, their desire to develop sixty five Farm Road. So I hope that you take that into consideration. Thank you.
Um, may I respond to Adam?
Yes, please, Jeff.
Um, I agree with you, Mr. Moore, that um it would benefit the town to have a consolidated set of plans for a single site. Unfortunately, I don't think that's the reality that um we can enforce. I don't think that a scenic road hearing can require an applicant to submit a set of plans that is consistent with any other proposals that have come forth for the property in the recent past. And so again, I just want to stress that like this is a really narrow decision. And while while I agree with Mr. Feno that all stone walls are historically significant. I do also think it's unreasonable for the Planning Board to prohibit all cuts in all stone walls. And when I look at this particular stone wall and the proposed location of the cut, I mean, um, it to me, it looks like a reasonable location for a cut. If this proposal, if this exact photo were taken on another scenic road in town, it's not clear to me if the same people would be making the same arguments. I do think that there is a marriage between the development proposal, the proposal of a variety of developments on this property. But I don't feel comfortable leveraging that into the decision of the Scenic Road Act. And so, you know, I look at this photo of where the stakes are, that seems like, you know, gi- given that the 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 options on this site, I I would rather have it where it's staked than, for example, over here where the stone wall is more prominent. So I I have a hard time. Um. I I guess, you know, again, really divorcing my feelings about burdens on the water resources, because I don't think that that should be part of the discussion here, that I I don't I don't think that this looks like a particularly problematic location for a stone wall cut. It appears to be a reasonable um proposal for simply enforcing the Scenic Road Act.
Yeah, I I guess this is just a scenic road act and it only is the the constraints are just about the stones. Um, Heidi, the concept of, okay, this is, you still need to driveway permit. And at what point, when a drive, I mean, our our bylaws state a shared driveway for more than two houses require a special permit. At what point does that come into the equation? Do we know yet? I know we were.
We don't have anything before us.
Okay.
There you have there's all kinds of concepts and discussions, but there's nothing before Planning Board that says this is a common driveway. This is a single driveway. It's strictly stone removal. And then the driveway permit will is gonna have to go through what Sean will go through and decide if he's happy with what's being proposed.
Okay.
Eddie May, could I could I respond? Would that be all right?
Sure.
Um, so I just, I want to make something clear to folks because I feel like Brian is yet again finding uh nefarious behavior in what I'm doing here tonight. And I want to be clear what I'm doing. I have an approval from the uh Conservation Commission and from the Board of Health to put a driveway. I don't know what it is off the top of my head, but sixty feet to the right or to the east of the existing gravel driveway. It will run uh very close to the area of flooding. Um, and I was originally going to come before you to seek an approval to go through a similarly rubbleish wall to build that driveway. And then I realized that it might be a lot better to run a driveway much further to the west and stay away from the resource area of Concom. And I mean, Brian and other folks showed up at the Concom hearings and they said, oh, my God, you're building this right next to the flood area. And now I'm moving it a good two hundred feet away from that resource area. And I I I'm, there's nothing hidden in any of this. I'm trying to make a change that I think is for the better for the four homeowners who I hope someday will live on this fourteen acres of land. And it'll also be, I think, better, given Brian's concern about the expressed concern about the the driveway that was proposed at twenty feet wide, much, much closer to the flood line. And I I I mean, I I think it's a positive development. It still means four homes. I get that. Um, but I think it's a positive development and I'm I'm not clear on what is nefarious about it. I I just said twenty minutes ago, this has not, this location of a driveway has not been run through the Board of Health and through the Concom and through uh anybody else. It's it, this is a concept that I'm asking you to approve the first step of. You approve it. I get a driveway permit. I go back to the Board of Health. I go back to the Conservation Commission with a driveway in a much better place, both for the new residents and for the community. And, you know, I'm I'm way off topic from what's before you tonight, but I feel like I want to address it with you. I want you to understand there's nothing nefarious. It's it it's, I literally woke up in the middle of the night and thought about this and said, oh, my God, why didn't I put the driveway further away? And why, why don't I put the driveway behind the homes rather than in front of the homes, which is what the proposal is, right? Now the homes, and in fact, the homes will sit, the first home, the only home within four hundred feet of Farm Road under this new plan will be up eighty feet off of Farm Road. It'll face the pond, sitting at the approximate location of the existing gravel driveway. Nothing will get paved over or developed anywhere to the east of that or to the right of it, if you're standing on.
Since we, again, this is to kind of rein it back in with what all the only, you know, step very concisely and well put said, the only decision in front of us is this.
Yes, and that's what I'm asking you to do, but I don't want people to come away with this idea that this is nefarious. It's not nefarious.
Um, Frank, as a Planning Board member, is there something that you wish to contribute?
Yeah, I just wanted to to bring this back to the the points that the Planning Board had to uh to use the consideration points that we read earlier. And we're 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 getting a skew of that. Uh, and I I appreciate the the concerns and trying to meet the concerns of, you know, everybody involved here and explaining all that. Yeah, but we are looking at a very specific set of requirements and um thank you, I think it's stuff that uh put it up there. There's considerations A through M here. And that's what we need to use to to focus this conversation and make this decision. And I I I suggest that we move this decision.
All right, um. My motion is to approve the up to twenty one feet removal of stone at this to accommodate a driveway with the stones, the removed stones being used to repair sections along the wall, existing wall. Is there a second?
And to require.
On, sorry, and contingent upon the uh receiving a driveway permit from the Public Works Director.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Um, are there any further comment from Planning Board members? Okay. One one sec.
Okay, yep. Addie May, I'm sorry, I was trying to find my mute button. It disappears when I'm sharing my screen, so it takes me a minute. Um. We, you said up to twenty one feet removal of stone wall. I just I just want to make sure there's nothing that we need to do to tie it to a location because we don't have a specific location with dimensions on the plan. We don't have don't even have a width on the plan. Like, so I just wonder if there's um something we need in the motion that ties it to. I don't, I don't know how to proceed with that because.
Actually, we actually kind of do. If you look at that drawing, it shows from the current existing gravel driveway
I see.
fifty feet to the other. So that gives that.
Okay. Thank you.
Relative to it, you can approximate the the width of the driveway as well as maybe stating that the the verbal uh discussion of the width.
Thank you.
Hearing.
Okay, so um the motion that was moved and seconded is that um I mean, we're we're I'm gonna withdraw that motion and issue a new motion. My motion is based upon the plan presented at our public hearing on Tuesday, December tenth. The Planning Board approves the removal of up to twenty one feet of stone at the drawn locate at the illustrated location a hundred and sixty feet south or east, no, west, west, west of the existing gravel driveway with the condition that the stones removed are used along to repair sections of the existing stone wall. And that our approval is contingent upon approval of and receipt of a driveway permit from Public Works Director.
Second.
Moving seconded. All those in favor, Addie May.
We should have discussion again.
So is there any further discussion? Thank you, Frank. Okay, hearing none. Addie May Weiss is an I. Frank Hope?
Aye.
Steph Harrison?
Aye.
Jim Greerino?
Aye.
And novel.
All right.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Addie May, I think we need to move to close the uh the hearing.
Yes, I thank you. I moved to close the hearing for the um Scenic Road Act of sixty five Farm Road. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, Addie May Weiss is an I. Frank Hope?
Aye.
Steph Harrison?
Aye.
Jim Greerino?
Aye.
Aye.
And Robb.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, so um should we go back to the slides for the next week's public hearing? We were almost done through those. Um. Steph, are you able to pull those where we were again?
Yes, I'm sorry. What were we even talking?
I know, we were on the.
Oh, the PowerPoint. Okay, yes, yes. Okay, so um. My comment here was whether we need to spend a lot of time on the initial concept, but I guess I've been convinced sort of through a variety of conversations that. It, it might raise more questions if we don't share that there was an initial concept and where it was and explain. I don't know. That it's different. In the public hearing.
I think people need to know that we really looked into and considered more than just the one site we're presenting.
Yeah.
So I mean, a lot of people will know that, but there's still some new people to this topic, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think it is of value to showing again, people to remind people that there was, uh, I mean, this is the stuff that was presented in February of last year. January and February of last year, so. And um there were other areas considered. And then it gives open to, you know, when people say, well, master plan says that multifamily housing should be in our town center. Um, but then I think, uh, you know, I don't know if we're able to show where. I think that was, you know, some of those areas we, they didn't even qualify. Um, that were considered. I mean, that's, we, I don't know, that's good, that's gonna, digging into the weeds too much, but I guess it goes to the. And how the calculation was, it didn't, for three A, it didn't necessarily make sense. Um.
Yeah, I definitely wouldn't go into all of that. I, and so that's what I struggled with is like the sort of like. If this comes up, then the natural question is, well, why didn't this work? And there's so many nuances to. Answering that question that I ju. I just.
I think you, you refer back to the community survey that was done where the, the bulk of, of the message came out. People thought the best place to do this was close to transportation.
Yeah, but that, that was after. That was after this one was kind of like.
Right, and there were a number of people who did like the idea of an overlay in town center, except for then when we were talking about how it got calculated. I mean, there were, and that, that brought up, I, I, I don't know, I think it's valuable to have it there because there will be people who say, but wait, that we, we wanted.
Yeah.
Or we wanted those properties included.
I agree. I just think we need to be able to be concise and clear about. Why we went away from this topic and maybe that's really sort of like breaking down in layman's terms. You know, the, that there was problems with the calculations, there was uncertainties with mixed use, there were too many um factors as. The state guidance was evolving and people were understanding it and interpreting things differently. And it just, this was kind of more and more not working for the town. So I think we just need to be able to like answer that question because it's, will probably come up. And I think you're right. It go, it leads right into the next slide is the survey results.
I, I think the biggest obstacle for people that you just need to know is we have several public water supplies in that area, which that limited. If you talk about the different zones, it made that whole downtown area very limiting.
Hmm.
For actual use. And I would just end it at that. I would just say, you know, with the public water supplies, and when you had that one thing, you saw there was actually very little land that was left.
Mm-hmm.
No.
I like that. That's real, that's really clean and it's, that's helpful.
Yeah.
Um, just to have it that simple.
So if we go back to the slides, there are, there are a lot of slides, and I think uh based on what we've done already, we need to uh get rid of a number of slides.
Oh, well, we have. We, I've, I thought I was sharing screens and I was like clicking away and editing and sorry about that, guys. Um. Yes, um. We did, we have done a good job of, of getting rid of slides so far, so that's good. So then this segues right into the survey, the survey, right? So, so this was our initial formulation, um, remaining area.
Well, we looked at what eight or ten other sites. And then started excluding.
Yeah, well, yeah. So the.
And I would just slip through this, through this and let people know the survey is online. But, you know, there's a few things that you wanna point out, you know, these are some of the, those, the next slide, I think, you know, one, yeah, that one shows what people were um preferring.
So this, you can point to the fact that this kind of led us away from the downtown area.
Yeah.
And toward, you know.
The North Sherburne Water District was a big one, which is.
You know, I, I don't think so. This, this is a kind of a busy slide and it can be confusing. It does, you can make sense out of it. This, I think, should be as a response to a question as opposed to in the main presentation. I, that's what I think.
Yeah, I also think you need to show how we um went through the other sites and. Deleted ones for various reasons, or just show a matrix. We had ten here and then it was reduced to. For whatever reason, it was reduced to.
The one.
One or two sites and then. The Kendall Avenue um parcel was chosen because closest to the MBTA stations and water and sewer.
Could we not just say that we, we went through uh that whole list of things that we went through and putting the survey to narrow down to this one site? And if somebody says, well, what were the, you know, the analytics of this af- after the fact? And you could always pull this up. You have more time to talk about it. You're not as restricted with, with time, and obviously, time is not a really big thing in the beginning, but ultimately for. And some of the presentation at the, at annual town meeting.
Cause I think, I, I think a lot of people are gonna ask, well, how did you select this site? And then there, there's a process to that, which they may not be.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Show what the process is, but there's dat- all this data, you know, only when they say, well. You know, we see what the results were of that process, then you can say, sure. Whereas they don't ask. Keep on going.
So that there was a survey would be a slide. Maybe we don't call it survey results, but just, you know, townwide survey, hundred and sixty-four responses.
Yeah.
And then just jump right to that, the, the, the findings from that survey led us to this. They, I mean, we can say results were discussed in, in a noticed public hearing, the, a, a public, a public meeting that was noticed to everyone who took the survey, right? So um, let me just start a new slide and. Uh, I guess this one is fine. So if we say. Why does? I'm sorry, guys.
All right.
Why does this? Why does, I know how to do this. I have to, I've dealt with these kinds of templates before. There we go. Okay, so this is going to be survey, so um community-wide survey. And then we would just say hundred and sixty-four. Open for three weeks. Is that three weeks?
It's about that, yeah. Um, almost four.
Were they all residents, the responses?
Yes.
Yeah, they're required.
And what else do we want? I don't think we need to know about. And then um. Results. Discussed at public meeting. Is noticed to all survey. Participants, something like that. And then this whole set of slides would then move to the end as kind of like backup if we need to go there. Does that work for folks? Oh, wow, this font is really um. Exciting. And then we wanna say that the results were. Considered in the development of the current proposal, right?
I, I don't think you should say, and you have one before, a public meeting that was noticed to all survey participants. That was, it was noticed to the all-town residents. We sent.
I thought in the upfront matter of the survey, we said, come, take the survey and then come to our public meeting to find the results. Like, I thought that was in the intro to the survey itself, so that. People who were in.
Flyer out to the whole town saying.
That as well.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um.
I'm just concerned when you say that, it looks like we only let.
Only, okay, I see what you're saying.
So, uh, so we only let a hundred and sixty-four people.
Um, yeah, with townwide mailer. I, I, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Then, then narrow down the choices to the, to the proposed.
There were seven initially um discussed.
Seven locations?
Yeah.
And parcels, right?
Yep. And actually, we can say eight. It's during the meeting, we added another one.
I mean, we haven't said anything about, this is, so this is the survey, but we let, you know, back to um. Oh, did Andy drop off?
Yes.
Okay, I think Andy was saying there was a process here, right? Where we went from the initial concept that we haven't sort of said, we then went to eight sites townwide.
Yeah.
Um.
And that can be in the narrative, doesn't necessarily, when you have the previous slide, I think the narrative can be our process that.
Yep, so we'll just say that they were used to this, what do we call it, the prop?
Collect the parcels?
We know, we said like proposed. It was in our checklist of things, proposed area for compliance. That's what we were calling it.
Yeah.
To guide proposed area for compliance. And then that segues into the proposed area for compliance, right? So that's what this should say, proposed.
So.
Um, slide, can you, I know you've got MOD on, on slide eight. Can we um just say multifamily overlay district? It's like you, multifamily overlay district and then parentheses, it may, it has to go down to the next line.
Yep.
Just to. And then parentheses, then I'd be just to that.
I guess the F and family should be small.
We just need to be consistent. Looks like it's in caps.
Okay.
Well, it's inconsistent. We can, we can do a cleanup at the end for that kind of stuff. Someone.
Then it'll be MFOD.
If, if I were a member of the public, I would have a question. So five acres is the minimum requirement. How do we get to six?
Oh, because.
We need.
Even, uh, it's actually just over five acres. It's five point something. And then you have to always allow that there could be some wetlands or something else that would shave off. Potential units, so we went with six acres to try and ensure that we met the seventy-eight units.
Why don't we just say up, uh, up to one parcel from the proposed lots designated? We don't have to say that it's a six-acre lot.
Because it, this parcel, the air, the parcel that we selected is larger than six acres.
It's twenty-one point, almost twenty-two acres. It's twenty-one point nine acres. And I don't want people to think that, oh, we're gonna do fifteen units per acre on twenty-one acres.
Remember the bylaw language and all the discussion that we had, and we got permission to say up to six acres.
And it's, it's a six-acre area, right? Like, there isn't a parcel. There isn't.
Right.
A six-acre parcel.
Yeah, you can say.
From, from the proposed, from the proposed parcel, right? That's, okay.
Six-acre overlay.
Up to six acres.
Yep.
Yeah, the whole, the overlay is over the whole parcel. And so within that whole parcel, if there is a, the, the byright development is only up to six acres within that parcel. But the overlay encompasses the whole.
Oh, so the overlay district is not the six acres.
The overlay, the, the district is the twenty-one acres, but the developable um des- amount is up to six acres of that.
Yeah.
District.
I think it's okay the way we got it written, cause it's the parcel that's getting the overlay. The whole parcel gets the overlay, but up to six acres. Is what will be, is proposed. We, we, our bylaw language says up to six acres, so I think the language here is correct.
Okay. I'm channeling Andy.
Yeah, I, I know that the consultants said we could do this and they thought it would pass muster. I'm still surprised that it.
Me too.
It will. I mean, it just seems like.
It seems so odd.
I, I have an email from EO HLC saying they've done this in another small adjacent town.
Don't jinx this, Rob. We, we beat this horse.
I know.
We're all, let's move on. I don't wanna jinx this. I mean, yeah.
I mean, this is redundant with.
Yeah, I think you can get rid of that slide. We already gave it.
Notice of approval, notice of acceptance. That's the thing that we.
Did the outreach.
We, we talk about submit, but we don't. So this is.
See, compliance and approval are actually two different things.
I see, I see, yep. But I, okay, I can.
But you can get rid of, I think you can get rid of this slide. And I could not get those bullets to line up. Steph, you might be able to do magic.
So. This also feels a little redundant with the prior timeline slide.
This is going forward, but yeah, I guess it is a little bit redundant, could.
We already did the coffee bar, though, yeah?
Um, no, I'm going again. Uh, what, the whole point is that we are continuing our outreach.
Okay.
Even after the public meeting, I still plan to try and have some sessions or other community spots for. Educating people.
Okay.
And you can just say continue outreach if you wanted. I was trying to give examples of what we're gonna do.
Um. Yeah, I'm not, oh, there we go.
Oh, you got it. Thank you. I, I just kinda want people to know, it doesn't stop after next week's meeting.
Ongoing outreach.
Yeah.
Yeah, instead of continue ongoing, yeah, good word.
Yeah.
I mean, next steps, the slide I deleted had like, like, some of these are ongoing outreach, right? Like, these are ongoing outreach.
Right.
But these are next steps.
Yes.
And.
I guess, yeah, I guess initially I had ongoing outreach was one of the next steps and the other things, those were examples of what they were.
Right, um.
And just might if they. I don't know, um. Just get rid of the, the next steps wording, cause you got, you don't need it that, that way, just delete it. But you got kind of the header there, ongoing outreach. I mean, presenting it at a, a town meeting is, is a form of outreach. Preparing for the advisory and, and um presenting an advisory and select word is a form of outreach.
Yeah, but I think we need a next step slides. That includes I almost feel like we have to kind of go back to our approach to compliance and say the next step is town meeting and then state approval. I don't want to repeat it, though.
Yeah, I thought you already did that.
We did. Okay, so this would just be ongoing outreach.
I mean, I see at the next slide of what happens, I mean, you could I mean, you know, next steps is approval at town meeting. And yeah, I see what you're doing, repeating the next steps. It's heavy and relevant here unless it's, you know, I suppose it's you've got the spring town meeting slide, so.
How about this? Does that
Sure.
Well, that works. So we have, this would be next steps. So we address both ongoing outreach and spring town meeting, and then maybe we put like a last bullet that's state approvals.
Yeah.
I don't think you need prep for advisory.
Yeah, I agree. I left that in because I took I took the advisory hearing. Is there a formal select board step that we would do as part of town meeting prep?
Usually it's advisory and select board hearing that we do it.
Bloody Saturday one.
Yep.
And
There's a separate advisory hearing even before that one.
There is a strike.
That's like now, right? That's today.
No, there's another one.
Now, does it that we go to before advisory and then we'll go before the joint advisory select board hearing. There's two steps there.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Advisory presentation.
Have to call those out separately? We just say that we'd meet with advisory and select board and during hearings and that's it?
Yeah.
There are two major hearing, there are two major opportunities for people to weigh in.
But people, but that's, that's, that's not specific to three A. That's the town meeting process, right? So we can just say we're going to meet with these guys on multiple occasions as we would with any. Um. Okay. The consequences slide.
I'd like to use a better word.
What's that?
Consequences.
Consequences if town votes no?
Or just consequences for no vote.
Let me just sort of read ahead here. This feels really accessible to me, though, to a to a layperson. What happens if the town votes no? I'm not opposed to changing that to consequences, but this just feels like really easy
Just simple.
Yeah.
Keep it.
I think so.
I mean, when we're going through the slides, we can say the consequences, we can say verbally, but you know, what happened?
They can put a word up here, consequences, right above what we're talking about them.
I think the lawsuit in Milton happened back in October.
I remember it happening to be Yeah, we did. I mean, that that happened and that's how they 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 lost, right? Or did we get an answer?
I think they have until February for a decision.
Okay, that's what, okay.
For just for Milton to make a decision or for a decision on what happens to Milton?
State.
From the attorney general?
I'm not going to claim that I know.
Okay.
Who
The lawsuit, I mean, the the case, yeah. I guess that that's it. I mean, the lawsuit's ongoing because the decision hasn't come down yet, but they had, so I guess I think what we have.
I would not give a timeline. We don't know it.
Yeah.
Can we just just confirm that we don't have any more?
Yeah.
Oh, we do know? Okay.
I mean, Milton's Milton's still in litigation, basically. So
You want to say multiple loss grants and is facing lawsuit from attorney general?
Is that are you Isn't that what it says?
No, it says 13 programs and facing lawsuits.
My only point was, I think the attorney general sued. And it's and it's just waiting for a decision that matters.
Yeah, but that's that's a lawsuit.
Yeah, I think I think the word facing sort of makes it sound like there's no decision made. Right? Like, it's like, oh, there's there, there could be a lawsuit.
Okay. Is in litigation?
Well, there, well, there is a lawsuit, but no decision. That's the point I'm trying to
Is in litigation with the state attorney general?
Sure.
I mean, it was litigation, though, again, going too accessible and what everyone understands. I mean, a lot of people understand a lawsuit.
They have been sued.
Right.
And do we know for sure it's 13 grant programs, you know?
That's what I got off of the E O H L C website.
Yeah.
Could there have been more?
Uh, there aren't more right now. They've just, it's just 13 programs that they've listed that you're not eligible to. They, they, they are putting the catchall that like the next one, potential for other cuts in local aid and state funding. They're making that just a general statement. But they're not saying what programs, but they did list 13 specific programs like Mass Works.
Complete streets.
Housing choice, yeah.
And what are potential for legal costs if there are already a lawsuit, they have legal costs to this, but then there's, are there any other lawsuits that that why you
Potential for legal costs, that's for our town. So we said the the legal is wait, now we said the first bullet is Milton's legal. And then the third one is Sherburne, with, you know, any town basically is got legal cost to defend a lawsuit.
I wonder if this should be like an example of the consequences, like if the consequences are cuts in local aid and state funding and the legal cost to defend a lawsuit. And then at the bottom, we say this, and this is what happened to Milton, right? It's like, this isn't, this isn't a Milton's situation isn't a consequence for Sherburne. These, these two bullets are the consequence for Sherburne. And then we can illustrate it, maybe. I don't know. I'm getting in the weeds here.
Yeah, just move it down below or
It just seems like a mixed list to me.
Yeah, it is somewhat of a, I mean, it was meant to be narrative, like to add on to it because it's like, what happens if the town wants to know? And then you discuss it because people have brought up to me, wow, what's happened to Milton? Milton's, you know, that they actually think, like, a lot of people think it's great that Milton voted this down. So
Yeah, no, I want to to describe what happened to Milton. I just don't necessarily think it's a consequence. It's it's almost repetitive with the potential impacts to Sherburne.
Or just, um, why don't you just move the Milton to the third? Can you, can we just move it down?
If you do that, maybe you could say, an example is Milton, where or something like that? Oh, yeah, perfect.
Yep.
Okay, that feels better for some reason. Okay.
How about between those two boxes? It's kind of like an almost setup for a if then statement. So if you vote yes, then support.
This side?
Yeah, that's what it's like an if then statement, right? If if you vote yes, then support this warrant or if you want, um, I don't know, it seems to me like it's kind of set up to be an if then or an arrow. Yes, blah, 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 arrow, please support.
Yeah, I don't know if the graphics will let us be that fancy. I see where you're going with it, Frank, but I think without kind of creating new graphics, I think the template that we have, it'll, we're stuck with this and I'm, I'm okay with this.
I think you can just insert an arrow, but okay.
I'm not sure what the point is, Frank. This is not subject to misinterpretation. There's two very very clear sentences there.
There are different sentences. One is just a reminder that yes does not require to be built. You're trying to let them know again, it's just zoning. And that's what I wanted to take away here. And the other one was the ask.
Yeah. Looks fine.
Heidi, I will send this back to you. It got shorter, which is great.
Yes, no, that was wonderful.
So it's now 10 slides, which is great.
Perfect.
11, 11 slides.
I'm just looking online, state's highest court hears arguments enforcing Milton to comply with MBTA housing law. That was in October. Supreme Judicial Court.
You ready for the next agenda item?
Can't wait.
I I know. It's like it just gets really long.
We're doing
zoning bylaw and review updates. Did I send anything to you on that one, Steph? Can't remember.
Yeah.
All right, because I was trying to look at what's on the table. Trying to look at one. Okay. So I think that's something we need to to just have a quick discussion on. We had a whole lot of items that Chris Kenny had gone and we've got whole lots of what Steph has done. And maybe we should put this on for our next meeting is to circulate a list for everyone to realize and look. And is there anything that we can cut off? To try and limit what we're going to do at the town meeting and get warrant language together. Because I was going through and there are quite a few things we want to keep on. So like the ADUs, we need to have the hearing and language done. And a lot of that is, we have several different spots that we have to go through our zoning bylaws to correct our A D U definitions, different things that dimension tables, table or table of uses. Those things all had to be updated and we're going to have to go down a whole list of exactly what numbers we're going to change. Then there were some other administrative updates, which also need a hearing and language, such as things where low, moderate income, do we delete things because there was an extinct building code? Uh, we have to update our table of uses for open space plan that which allows duplexes, we need to reflect that. We need to remove the district, the district class M that was listed because we don't have that anymore. So a lot of those type of things can get all lumped together as administrative. We need to decide if we really want to tackle anti segmentation language, which at this point, we're so late in the game, I don't know if it's worthwhile adding that on to our ever growing list here. It's up for you guys to decide, but we could put up the timelines I sent to you, Steph, and we can take a look again at
It was a three A timeline. Oh, wait, hold on.
No, I hadn't, I'd, actually, and the three A is also similar to the other warrant article timeline.
I got a three and it has all the approved, the state approvals and stuff, but I can pull it up.
Okay.
Had it open a second ago. I just closed it. Sorry.
Okay. We have, we have the MBTA meeting next week. I don't know what else we want to put on that meeting. You know, we're looking at December, so the MBTA one, I put in yellow what we've already done. And warrant language, we're pretty close to it. The public hearing will actually be done as of next week. So I actually feel we're in very good shape with the MBTA side. And let me just thought.
So what your question is whether we, what are we adding to our meeting for that? I mean, I have no idea what kind of attendance or feelings there will be.
That's the chapter three A hearing that's on the 17th?
Yeah, yep.
You're asking what to add to the agenda? Is that what you're
If there's anything else, I'm trying to, so Steph, in that same email that was labeled docs, part two, the warrant timeline was listed as well. I had P D timeline to three A and then I had warrant timeline draft.
Okay, I must not have grabbed that one. Hang on a second. Let me shuffle a little bit. It won't take me long.
Okay. Because if we only have, so for the the A D U, we have to have a hearing in before February 2nd, which will help our be more compliant with when the law changes. So when you back up the timing, we only have two meetings usually in January. One of them will have to be the A D U hearing, which means we'll have to start publicizing that in the newspaper, get the mailings out to people, et cetera.
That sounds so daunting since the A D U warrant article hasn't even been drafted.
Um, I I know, and that's why I feel like we're scrambling. I'm going to have to try and get something together in the next couple of weeks to get that.
Here's the warrant timeline. I'm sorry, I missed that attachment in the email. Sometimes the email system like hides attachments from me and I have to like click view more attachments to see that it's there. Sorry about that.
Yeah. So we've, we've discussed a lot of potential articles already, but now we really need to say, these are definitely what we're putting on. I think again, MBTA, we're in good shape. The A D U and administrative bylaws ones are the ones I would really recommend we focus on. And then we have, the request is come through that we need to update our sign bylaw. And they want that on the spring town meeting because we
It's a separate warrant article.
This is a separate warrant article.
So it's not housekeeping?
This is not housekeeping. Um, and that's what I'm looking at. Is that going to be a third? Can we? It actually could be housekeeping if we're updating our sign bylaw. It, you know, we may be able to
I think it could be
Under that hearing.
Keeping if we're, we keep it simple enough. We're adding, I think, what is kind of some thought on just adding some dimensional requirements or limitations.
Yeah, so I've asked Jeannie to, Jeannie's the one that brought it to me and she's reaching out to another town to get a sample of their bylaw so that we have something to look at and say, is this what we want? And then how will that fit with ours? Is it just simple changes? I don't know yet. Because I'm not sure what Chris Kenny is looking at and Jeannie have been discussing as far as what they want to see in our bylaw. So I know we want to keep the holidays light after the 17th, but I think January will actually be a very busy
Can I ask you, Heidi, I'm just going to share my screen. Is this the sign bylaw that we're talking about? Got to click eight times, not seven. Um, is this the sign bylaw that we're talking about?
That's what I think so. I haven't gotten specifics from them. I mean, this, she sent this to me this afternoon saying, we need to get this on. It's like, well, said, I'll bring it up tonight, but
Okay.
Um, We do have it. It does say something about illumination, right?
It talks about obstruct sightlines.
Yeah, I think further down there's illumination, but I don't know if that's just for, um, yeah, but you were scrolling and it was, it popped up.
Oh.
Signing, she'll include wording, then
Illumination.
Okay.
Fixed white light from an external source.
No.
Set on the ground nearby. No sign shall be illuminated between 10 P M. and 6 A M.
So that's all. I didn't want to get into detail till we get the
Yeah.
But but just
Agreed.
A heads up, so.
Okay, um, I do have some concerns about the Okay, um, I do have some concerns about the ADU bylaw. With respect to it being separate from the housekeeping bylaw. But married to the housekeeping bylaw and I just want, we will at some point need to think through. What changes are in what bylaw and if one bylaw is contingent upon the other passing? Or if we have a backup version. That shuttle something that that represents. It that non, non passage of the housekeeping, like an ADU version that. You know what I mean? I just, we just need to like. Think through a little bit.
Basically, if the, I mean, I think you can hook them up because. The ADU is gonna be by state right anyway, no matter what, if we don't get this to pass. And honestly, the ADU to me is gonna be a two step process. Because we're not getting all the guidelines and everything else, we're gonna have this go around to try and get compliant somewhat with the state. But then the state will probably come out and issue more guidelines that may make us revisit this the following year again to say, okay, now we have to.
But like, for example, the the definition of multi, of single family home.
Yeah.
Is going to be in the housekeeping bylaw.
Yeah.
As well as in the ADU bylaw. So if it does, if housekeeping doesn't pass and then ADU comes up. Like some of, some of the AD, the. In order to develop the language for the ADU bylaw, I have to decide, do I use. The existing zoning bylaws as my starting point? Or the housekeeping bylaws presuming that they pass as my starting point, which would have the new definition of single family home.
Well, I would hope that. These are just administrative changes. I cannot see why these wouldn't pass.
The housekeeping section.
Yeah.
So then it needs, but it needs to be content, I think there needs to be some relation, some dependency between them because if for whatever reason, housekeeping doesn't pass. Then the ADU bylaw is almost it. If it's based on the housekeeping version of the bylaws and just making additional changes to that. And the housekeeping doesn't pass, then we need to adjust the multifamily definition in the ADU bylaw, right? And that won't be in the ADU bylaw. It'll be in the house. I, there's just like, there's these iterations of like, there, there's these, um.
We, we should have the version that is, um. I guess the question is, is how much are we changing as far as our housekeeping? I think if the definition is the only thing that's really different.
Couple definitions, yeah. Like because we have apartments, we have single family, we define duplexes, all that stuff that that relates to ADU.
We probably would have to have a version that is using the existing language, but we would present, we would submit the version.
Based on the housekeeping.
My recommendation, my thought is we would submit the updated version using the, assuming that the housekeeping.
Yes.
Go through, but have the a version with the existing non changed.
Yes.
You present as an amendment and let Jackie know ahead of time that if. Housekeeping doesn't change, then that we would, this is the ADU bylaw with the existing non updated language.
Okay, and I know that the planning board has done this in the past. We have contingent bylaws like this. And I just don't know if anything has to be done in the warrant to describe it as a contingent bylaw or anything like that. So I, I'm, I'm like way out of my. Um, my league here, but I just wanted to bring it up because it's gonna be a consideration.
Right. Yeah, they, they did that more on some bigger items, but and so not necessarily housekeeping things. So I, I would have to. We'll have to think about that one.
But I think the way that Adama proposed it is the right way to do it. I just don't, I want to make sure that we don't have to do something different. To the warrant article itself to describe it as contingent. I just, I, I was never really paying that much attention.
I would make the motions on the floor to amend the ADU if the housekeeping failed.
And as far as the warrant article is, proceed as though it was.
It was, it was gonna approve, yeah.
Right, so.
Because the warrant article will reflect that there's things that are stricken or that are, you know. It'll reflect that we've updated.
Yes, but not in strike through, not in like, not explicitly, right? The only changes that will stand out will be the ADU related changes. So what is the base layer? If the base layer is housekeeping, then those don't jump out of you when you look at you, when you look at the ADU warrant article. So we just, I just need to understand what's the base layer that I'm building the ADU upon. I'm, I agree with having an amendment at the ready in case housekeeping doesn't pass, which is a third, now a third warrant article document.
Yeah.
Of the zoning bylaws, which is fine. I can handle all these documents, but I just, I just want to make sure that like when we present a warrant article. Where, where the warrant, the changes are contingent upon another bylaw passing.
Right.
Do we have to be transparent about that in even describing the warrant article? I don't want to get crossed up where, you know, somebody looks at ADU alone in a silo. And says, this isn't our current zoning bylaws. You know what I mean? Not that anyone would actually do that because nobody actually reads this stuff anyway, but like. I just, I just want to make sure there aren't procedural things that we need to do if we have a contingent warrant article.
Steph, how about you and I work on that?
Great. I think it's questions to like the moderator, to like Jackie and the moderator. Like, it's been done before. I just don't know what.
No, it has, but I think, I think if we can try and work on it and start, figure out, um, it would save some time.
Okay. So before the next. Oh, my gosh, is our next meeting in a week that we're talking about?
Yep.
Talking about the warrant articles. Are we talking about going through all of these changes?
No.
Week?
No, MBTA hearing, I did not really want to put anything else on that. But I do think we need to look at January and start scheduling.
Like.
January seventh is the first Tuesday. And then the third one is the twenty first. And I think we need to probably do this.
Submitted to select board by January twenty sixth.
Alright, so I'm thinking we need to meet the seventh and the fourteenth at least. And then not have scheduled the ADU hearing until January twenty eighth.
Adama, didn't you just say final languages do the twenty?
I mean, last year, everything had to be to the select board by, the final language had to be to select board by January twenty sixth.
And this year, that's January twenty fourth, right? It was a Friday.
I think so.
Yeah.
I mean, we can make a request that we just don't have, we've got too many different.
We can do three. I'd have to do three in a row to make it the twenty first.
I know. And I'm thinking that. Why don't, well, we'll schedule, we'll plan on January seventh to try and see how much we get done on this and where we are. And then, and then take a look and see if we need the fourteenth and the twenty first.
So you're still talking about having a hearing on the twenty eighth, which is after the final language submission date, potentially?
Right.
And that's okay?
Well, because we're gonna be publicizing what language it is for the hearing. I have to have the things for the hearing.
But can we make changes to the warrant article as a result of the hearing?
Uh, they have opened and closed the warrant articles before.
Okay.
So. We can try for the hearing on the twenty first.
Just gonna, we just can't wait for the seventh to decide that.
No, that's a problem. I said I need the two weeks of advertising. And unless you guys want to meet, I mean, I can't meet on the thirty first. And then it's like.
Thank you.
We just have very bad time right now during the week.
Yeah.
And I don't think we're gonna be ready by next Tuesday to add anything else onto the MBTA to discuss this.
The, I mean, as far as the language goes for warrant article purposes, the housekeeping.
We're pretty close. I just, I haven't.
You get you now, you just got the new version of.
Right, so I haven't taken inventory because I know there's some things on the. Um, affordable housing bylaw that are different between the twenty two, twenty three and the twenty twenty four version.
Yeah.
So there's a little bit of cross checking I need to do. Um. So I need, I need to work with the new bylaws that I just got.
And as far as bylaw, the only other one that we kind of don't have all in front of us is the ADU.
Yeah, we have nothing on the ADU, I think. We have no specific language.
Right, you're saying this, the seventh. We would be working on language for proposed bylaw for ADU by the seventh and then the hearing on the twenty first.
With a meeting on the fourteenth as well. I mean, it just seems really fast, but I don't know how else to do it.
No, I think we're gonna have to meet the seventh and the fourteenth right now unless we have a critically productive meeting on this seventh, but. Like this one, you know, we're already at. Three hours today.
Alright, January is just. It is what it is.
Unfortunately, we, the state has put a lot of changes on us.
Alright, I don't think we have a lot of choice. I mean, I guess hopefully that then it means that February lightens up a little bit, except then you go into advisory and you go into Bloody Saturday and all of that, so. I don't know, maybe someone gets to rest in July again. I don't know.
Let's, let's plan for January seventh and let's see where we get.
Okay.
Um, but I do think the hearing, it has to be the twenty eighth. For the ADU.
As long as the sequence is okay, right?
Right, yes, we'll have, yeah, we'll have. Um, Steph, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, you and I can still talk and start working on that, maybe next week even after and get after the hearing.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just FYI totally out of commission starting tomorrow through the sixteenth.
Okay, so then, yeah, so after the seventeenth, after the hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright, do you want planning board report, town planner report rather? Uh, so we went, uh, Adama and I went to the Southwest area planning meeting today and there was. Apparently a whole nother. Bill that the governor signed that was not really getting much notice around and. It's called an act promoting a clean energy grid and advancing equity and protecting ratepayers. And it's incredibly long. I said, oh, I'll print it off and just. Like read it for you guys, but if you can see, I can't even tell you like how long this one article is. It's got a hundred and thirty nine sections. The law, so I didn't get to read it today to present, but part of the gist of the talk was, is that. The state has decided that there are small systems and large systems for solar systems and energy storage and under twenty five megawatts. Who are small and they will have local controls. And then the larger ones will actually have state controls. And there's going to be a consolidated permit process that they've decided that these systems are going to have. And that's twelve months to have this consolidated process. To have all of the boards weigh in and someone's gonna have to be in charge of a consolidated process, which is gonna be similar to like the comprehensive permits for a forty B. Most likely, it's gonna end up being the planning board, um, from what we're hearing on this. And they did not come out with dates and deadlines of when they're gonna be. Are there regulations and guidelines? No, the D O E R is just gonna be hiring a person to run this new division. And it's another one of these states laws that has been signed in and we're kind of have to figure out what we do with it. Which was not another thing I wanted to think about of being added on to our plate right now. I, I don't think from what we're saying, it looks like we have probably at least a year, Adama. Is that what you were thinking that we have probably?
That's what it sounded like, yeah. They were saying, I think Barbara San Andres had pulled out the, the. Language when we were sitting there and she said, this twenty twenty six.
So hopefully over, just over a year. I think in March twenty six was the first thing, but it's. Just to let you guys know, there was another thing coming. Um, they were citing. That a lot of towns who were putting in battery energy storage system bylaws, a lot were not getting reviewed. Some are being. Looked at differently now, so it's probably a good thing that we're not putting anything forward in battery, battery energy this town meeting. It's a changing, evolving field. Sorry, Rob is keep, we're keeping you up.
I made a cup of tea, but I left it in the kitchen. I've been like wanting it this whole meeting.
I know. Yeah, so that's just a heads up. I kind of want to get through MBTA and ADU before I even start looking into this other area. And, um. I don't know how this consolidated permit is gonna look or how we're gonna work on that, but. To be determined.
Right.
And that's it.
Any other boards, reports?
Only from groundwater protection that we're in a critical drought.
Well, that should end tomorrow, right?
Nah, it's not that easy.
Well, we're running almost two inches.
We'll embrace the rain, but it's not gonna fix the problem.
I know, I just got a text from my husband saying tomorrow Alexis is driving and heavy rains. To Taunton and he's wondering if I should go with her, so. Like, oh, yeah, anyway, yeah, I guess we're gonna have heavy rain all day tomorrow, so, but.
Very windy, yeah.
Traveling.
Alright, so without any other further discussion, seeing the hour ten oh seven PM, I moved to adjourn. Planning board meeting for this evening.
Second.
Moved and seconded, make you frank. All those in favor of adjourning, Adama Weiss is an eye, Frank Coke.
Aye.
Steph Harrison.
Hi.
Rob Wolf.
Aye.
And Jim Guarino. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Heidi, for all the footwork you did for us and have a good night, everyone. Thanks, Steph, for. Being our usual document review and everything, so appreciate it.
Thank you.
Tonight, everyone.
Good night.